I'm going to call to order the Simsbury Board of Education regular meeting of February 29th, 2019. Thank you all for coming. We appreciate you being here. Before we open public audience, I would like to have our superintendent give a few words.
All right, very sorry about that. Good evening. I want to thank all those in attendance who felt it was important enough to come out tonight and provide our administration and our Board of Education with input. I also want to take the opportunity to introduce myself. My name is Matt Curtis and I'm the Superintendent of the Simsbury Schools here in Simsbury. It is my seventh year as Superintendent of Schools and my fifteenth year working in the school system here in town. When I was fortunate enough to accept this position, I recall being interviewed about what excited me most about this new opportunity. It is the same thing then as it is today. It is the realization that we have a very strong foundation to work from in our community. Our students are smart and passionate. They come to us ready to learn. Our staff is committed to excellence and new learning each and every day. And our community is supportive and involved. It is these three things that contribute to our successes. These attributes are what will help us navigate and learn from the recent events that have angered and hurt so many. I am open and hopeful to the possibilities in the future. As superintendent, I have had the opportunity to meet and talk with a great number of people who have shared their perspective on how this situation was handled or mishandled, and on areas we could focus on to ensure our school community can become more respectful and more inclusive. The feedback has been incredibly important. My hope is that from these challenging times comes an opportunity to learn, to grow, and to educate each other. There is no room for hate in this conversation. In the last three weeks, we have focused our energies on three distinct areas. One is with our students. We've held small group discussions with students to process the incident and create focus groups in areas for work that needs to be done in the future. Our students want, they want more group forums. They want to be in the work and have those challenging talks about race and about racism. We are working currently with CREG and with the RE Center to work on taking this model to scale. Our administration is planning various leadership opportunities to increase the involvement of our students in activities around equity and inclusion. Our staff and administration have, had already been engaged in, are continuing to be engaged in professional development on how to facilitate challenging conversations about race. Last Friday, our entire administrative team, in its entirety, participated in a workshop on cultural competency with Deacon Art Miller. Thank you, Art. I don't know if Art's here tonight, but your guidance and feedback over the last month has been incredibly meaningful. On March 22nd, we will have a full-day professional development day with our staff, with breakout sessions that are being planned by various members of our administration and teaching staff on topics related to being inclusive and cultural diversity. There's a community component to this as well. The Community for Care, under the leadership of Board of Selectmen member Cheryl Cook, is in the process of selecting a facilitator to hold a larger community dialogue on race. It is clear our community is prepared to engage in a large conversation. And we are in the business of teaching and learning, and one thing is for certain, feedback from parents, staff, and students are all in agreement that a review of our curriculum from a vertical standpoint, K-12, needs to be looked at and we need to ensure a more cultural, a multicultural approach. This work will take time and will be ongoing. Last evening, several members of my team met in Hartford and engaged in a conversation with our open choice families facilitated by CREG. We participated in a protocol called "Hopes and Concerns." I want to thank all who came to the table to provide input. The conversations and feedback were received were in the spirit of moving forward and in the importance of positive change. There is work to do, and we recognize that conversations about racism are uncomfortable. This evening provides the general public an opportunity to give input to our administration and the Board of Education as we seek to move forward productively. At this time, I turn the meeting back over to our chairperson Tara Willoughby, who will talk about the procedures and the protocol for tonight's opportunity to speak. Thank you very much.
We have public audience at the beginning of all of our Board of Ed meetings, and our public audience is an opportunity for people to give us feedback, to give us, to show us their interests, and to share from themselves what they see as interesting needs of the community. And we appreciate every time people come and are able to talk to us. That said, we are, we appreciate everyone's comments. We, we respect all, we expect all the comments to be civil and respectful of each other. When you speak, we ask you to state your name, your address. You'll have one three-minute period to speak. And we also want to make a point at this point in time that, under federal law, we are, personally identifiable information regarding a student is confidential. This law, FERPA, and it prohibits us from discussing or disclosing disciplinary action taken against any student of our school district. We hope that none of the conversations tonight goes towards that end. We keep it open and honest about what we're going forward with in our educational aspects. So, anyone who would like to speak, please come forward. Their mics on either side, and we will be happy to hear what you have to say.
My name is Patty Gonzalez, and my children and I have lived in Simsbury less than a year. We came from Farmington. In Farmington, well, let me say, my name is Patty Gonzalez. I live at 951 Hot Metal Street in Simsbury, Connecticut. I don't believe that Simsbury, the incident with these two young girls reflects the town at all. That's my personal opinion. I think parents, educators, and community leaders need to get together to make a difference. It's not just the education that is flawed here. Parents need to get involved. They need to talk to their children about uncomfortable topics. Racial discrimination is a multifaceted problem in every community. There are no exceptions. We celebrate Martin Luther King in January, then we celebrate Black History Month in February, yet we don't discuss or teach uncomfortable topics such as racism. My children are, one, one of my children is half African-American, and she's Puerto Rican. My other son is, you know, Caucasian. He's half Italian and half Spanish. So, I've experienced discrimination in every way possible because my children don't look like me, and it's always been a problem. This is why this subject matter is important to me. What we must do is educate our children not to discriminate and explain why it's wrong. We don't focus on discussing uncomfortable topics as much as we should. The more we talk about racism and why it's wrong, the easier it will become, and things can and will improve. In addition, the most important lesson kids must learn regarding discrimination is that it's a two-way street. My, when my son was four years old, my daughter obviously has brown skin, he has white skin. We lived in Farmington, and these Indian children, there was like half a dozen of them were playing. They wouldn't play with my son because he was white, and my daughter because she had brown skin, they would play with him. So, this is an opportunity to discuss multifaceted types of discrimination, not just the one-way street. In addition, the most important lesson is that parents need to get involved. It's not just, like I said, the school's responsibility. Our kids must become critical thinkers so they can learn to always do the right thing. The better we educate our children, the safer and more secure our communities will become. For this generation, we must remind our kids that the internet is forever, and that it will ruin your future if you don't do the right thing. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Wilson. I live at 23 Worcester Road in Terrifield. I come here as an educator, a concerned Simsbury resident, but most importantly is the mother of two children of color who have attended schools in the Simsbury Public School System for the past seven years. Growing up as a white woman in Simsbury myself, I never had to think about race. I lived my life safely in the bubble that Simsbury provided for me. I sat in classrooms, learning about people who looked like me from people that looked like me. And I say that because that is a very important part. I prided myself on being colorblind. I learned about Martin Luther King Jr. and Rosa Parks every January and February in school, and was confident in my belief that racism no longer a problem in America. Well, I'm here to tell you that after eighteen years in education, that can't be further from the truth. I'm not here to speak about the specific incident that brought us to this discussion tonight because honestly, this is one of many. Acts of racism and microaggressions happen all the time in this town. I've seen them with my own eyes. My husband and children have experienced them both in school and in the community. My son has come home several times this year, sharing stories of being singled out, not given the privilege of a kid being a kid afforded to his white peers when it comes to behavior, and feeling the expectations for him are to be more of an athlete than an academic. I'm here to say that we must do better. We pride ourselves on the education we provide to the children of this town. Let's be honest, many of us moved here for that very reason. Schools are here to educate, and in most areas of this work, it's undeniable that we are succeeding. But in the area of equity race, we are failing, and we are failing miserably. So, to the Board of Ed, I say, the responsibility lies with you. The next steps we take as a district will be crucial ones. Don't let this become some checklist initiative that's added into the district improvement plan. Have the tough conversations with your administrative team, your faculty, your staff, and your students. But before that, you must acknowledge as a district that there are inequities around race in this town. They are embedded in the curriculum, discipline data, and expectations and perceptions of students. Without that acknowledgement, no progress will be made. As Nelson Mandela stated, "Education is the most powerful weapon which you can use to change the world."
My name is Cecina Reynolds. I live at Seven Hallview Drive. I have a son, a wonderful son in the district, and I just have a couple of things to say. I've worked in many school systems, including the prison system, and I've worked at Avon High School, and I'm just flabbergasted. I'm flabbergasted that we're having this conversation. I don't think it should be an uncomfortable conversation. It should be very comfortable for all of us to talk about race. And if parents themselves were grounded and knew what Jim Crow was, I'm surprised that people don't know what Jim Crow laws were. I'm a college professor as well. I taught in high school in Weaver and many of the suburban towns, and I'm currently teaching in a very small town right now that I'm sort of protective of. But I can tell you this. I had a fifth-grade student come up to me, because I had outdoor recess. We all, isn't right? And he came up to me, he said, "I'm so excited today because we're celebrating Martin Luther King, and this group is coming in from North Carolina." And they came last year, and they performed "The Diary of Anne Frank." So, I can't wait, Ms. Reynolds, for me to see what Black history is all about. By the way, is it really Black History Month, or is it African-American Month, or is it Colored Month, or is it Negro Month? I was like, first of all, don't you ever, 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 ever say color. I consider myself black. But I like, I love the honesty that he had with me, that the comfort level that he had with me to say, "What do you consider yourself?" I really don't, and people can take whatever. This is who I identify. First of all, I'm Cecina Reynolds. So, that's my name. But if you want to describe me, describe, okay, describe me as being a black woman. I'm the only one in that school, so. But I just want to say that I think that we're, I mean, we're paying attention to something that's very delicate. It should not be uncomfortable. We have to make it not be uncomfortable. And those simple questions that that little fifth grader asked me, they should be free to talk about that with anyone. We've gone too far to turn around now. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. If the mic is too high for you, by all means feel free to bring it down. I'm sorry I didn't do that for you.
Thank you. Hi, good evening.
You're addressing the Board?
Okay.
Thanks.
Hi. Okay, good evening. My name is Vicky Carrasco Nunez. I'm a mom of twin girls. They attend Simsbury High School, and we've lived in town since kindergarten. I am at 3 Old Bar Road here in Simsbury, Connecticut. And I'd like to thank you for hosting this tonight. I think it's, it's a great thing to have that dialogue and to talk about uncomfortable issues, especially in 2019. I think the incident is a teachable moment. Just a few things, some food for thought, some things to consider, things like sensitivity training, not just for the children, but also for the staff. Perhaps basic remedial history classes, you know, to really address why what transpired is frowned upon. Perhaps revisiting the school's mission statement and core values, as well as the student handbook. Just some things to think about. Most importantly, you know, I think there needs to be a reassessment of the current staff across the district from a diversity perspective. Like I said, we've been here since kindergarten, very happy in Simsbury. Military family, my husband was military for twenty, twenty-four years almost, U.S. Air Force. So, we've traveled a lot. We've been, you know, double digits moving. But one of the things that I've noticed here, you know, it's, it's difficult to see your perspective and your experiences when the folks that are teaching you don't look like you. It's just something to think about. Continue the dialogue, because if you don't address it, you're dismissing it, and you're pretending that it doesn't exist. And then just lastly, and this is really to everyone here, just because something hasn't happened to you, just because you haven't experienced a certain something in your life, does not mean it does not exist. Because you haven't experienced something does not mean it does not exist. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Lloyd Hewie. I live at 17 Butter Nut Lane in Simsbury. I have a daughter here in the school. I look around, and I, I must, I'm kind of disappointed not to see many more white families Racism is a system that is built on other systems. What we have here is a representation of something bigger that goes on in our community. You know, there are different types of ways racism is expressed. It's through stereotypes, prejudice, and discrimination. It may be overt discrimination, but it might also be disparate treatment, the way you treat one student compared to another student. I'm not saying we treat everyone the same way, but we should give every student the same opportunity. If we're gonna punish students, we need to make sure that we're punishing students regardless of race, gender, whatever. We're punishing students across the line, the same way in all, in all situations. Disparate impact, the way we treat kids is gonna have an impact on them and where they go in the future. If teachers or people or parents are saying things negative about another race, another student, it's gonna have an impact on other students and how they get treated by other students. One of the things that was just said, which I want to reiterate, is within the Simsbury school system, there are very, very, very few teachers of colors. Kids grow up in a white community, they go to white schools, they have white teachers, they can go through college, they, people can grow up in this community and die without having a major impact, a person of color, major impact from a person of color. So, we need to look at how we staff in. You may say it's hard to find teachers of color. No, it's not. If you really want it, you can do it. We have to have the will to do it. So, thank you. I appreciate you making the time to have this discussion. I wish, as I said, there were more white families here. That's a disappointment, but hopefully this is not just, okay, we're gonna do something and it's over. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Maxine Robinson Lewin, president of the Greater Hartford NAACP. Address, P.O. Box 1012, Hartford, Connecticut. So, I've written a letter to the superintendent regarding our concern regarding the issue that happened with the two students. As we go into the disciplinary action, I do believe that we need to take a look at the policy and how we address these issues when they arise. I do believe that there needs to be a policy that sends zero tolerance for these issues when they occur. I also, we are also very concerned about the minimization of the situation by the principal. And also, over the few weeks, we have heard from several parents who bust their kids here from Hartford in relation to how their students are being treated in the school system. So, during, you know, you guys are offering these sensitivity trainings that are being implemented in small groups. However, from my understanding, that not all the children are required to go, but those who want to participate. I think that if we are going to change the culture of the town of Simsbury, or we're going to change the culture within the school district, that it should be something that should be mandatory for all students to attend. So, while you're implementing it for the teachers, the students should be required to go as well. So, I know when we met, we spoke about building a relationship with the NAACP and the Simsbury School District, and we are still very open to building that relationship, but I do think that it needs to be, you know, of substance and not symbol. So, as we move forward, the NAACP would like to be a part of the conversations, and we do hope as you guys are holding these forums that we can be a part of it, because it's very important that if you are gonna hold these forums and these trainings, that there needs to be people of color to be at the table and be a part of the conversation.
Absolutely. Thank you.
My name is Tim Boswell. I live at 11 Great Pond Road. My wife, Ann, and I are twenty-year residents of Simsbury. We put one daughter through Simsbury High School, class of sixteen, and currently have twin boys that are freshmen. Although we must move forward, it's important to acknowledge that the incident that brought us here together tonight, this forum was launched after an unfortunate internet posting that went viral. It was hurtful, and it was inappropriate. However, I personally don't think that there was racial hostility in these children's hearts, no hatred in their soul, and no moral defect of their character. Simply a poor decision by a teenage brain. But let's be honest with ourselves. We're embarrassed, embarrassed that our town was featured in the news for an isolated and unfortunate event. We then had to try to defend ourselves by subsequent communications. Despite, and I quote, "ongoing efforts within our schools to enhance educational opportunities for staff and students regarding diversity," there is clearly more work to be done. There will always be more work to be done. We're not unique in that as a community, state, or country. Racism cannot be tolerated in any form. Respect for diversity and inclusion is not a destination, it's a journey. Forgiveness and healing must begin if we really want to have an inclusive environment. Four days after seeing the media coverage, the Hartford chapter of the NAACP issued an incendiary press release. The president of the statewide chapter denounced the incident and said, and I quote, "It was part of the increasing racism fueled by President Donald Trump's rhetoric." He added, "There's a climate in the state of Connecticut and throughout this nation where racism is running rampant. It's very important that the NAACP pushes back and fights against these racists." The Board of Education and Simsbury community leaders held a meeting with the NAACP representatives to educate them on the breadth and depth of our well-established programs around diversity and inclusion.
Thirty seconds.
Glad to see the NAACP here tonight, and look forward to their pledge for continuing the conversation. Over the past three weeks, there have been threats of violence against these two children and their families. Where's the outrage over that? We'll gladly stand by and let the future of these two children be destroyed as long as our image of an inclusive and diverse public education community remains intact. Perhaps the true discrimination is on accountability of behavior.
Tim, three minutes.
I'll finish. I can no longer remain in the sidelines. We have issues in our school community. Alcohol, drugs, prescription drugs, vaping, bullying, cyberbullying, violence, sexting, and mental health, and yes, racial tension. I don't have the solution to all these problems, however, it's our responsibility as parents and members of the community. and members of this community to get engaged and get involved. Get out from behind your laptops, your tablets, your phones.
Tim, we have a timeframe.
Posting on the community message boards is not the way to drive accountability.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Hi.
Hi. My name is Nia Gilbert, and I go to Connecticut International Bachelor Academy, and I live on Woody Crest Drive, and I actually live in East Hartford. But I pretty much wanted to come up here and say that I keep hearing the word punish, and I don't think these girls need to be punished, they need to be educated. Because coming from a system where my school is very diverse, there's still people who are not educated, and these girls need to be educated, not punished. And I founded my own organization called I Shall Not Be Afraid, and we can't be afraid to have these type of conversations and to sit in front of, you know, Caucasian people talking to a black female. We need to have these conversations because if we don't have these conversations, then nothing's gonna change. But I really just wanted to say that these girls don't need to be punished, and you know, these girls with this mindset, is other kids need to be educated as well, not just kids in Simsbury, but kids in East Hartford, kids in general. We need to get youth more involved in things like this. And as I'm looking in the crowd, I see a lot more adults than I see youth and the new generation. That's where everything is gonna change, and we need to get youth way more involved in conversations like this, in forums like this. So not just the Simsbury community needs to be involved, but the NAACP, the Hartford Chapter, West Hartford, you know, New Britain, we need to get everybody involved in this situation, because not just this situation, but situations to come, so that more and more situations don't happen like this. So like I said, educate and don't punish. We need to educate, because with education, there comes peace, there comes love, and there comes unity. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you very much.
My name is Akeia S. Conlam, and I'm here to represent the Connecticut State Conference NAACP Youth and College Division, and our address is P.O. Box 1012 Hartford, Connecticut. So to start, in the age of the coolest kid in the jungle, hashtag H and M, the quote-unquote blackface turtleneck, hashtag Gucci, the blackface caricature dolls, hashtag Prada, the noose around the neck of a white fashion model, hashtag Burberry, this incident in the town of Simsbury is not a mistake, but a message. My skin is not your costume, it's your white privilege that gives you the ability to try to walk away from the inherently and overtly racist situation with the idea that an apology is enough. It reminds me that my blackness has the ability to miss various repercussions if it is just painted on, as those two young ladies did with makeup foundation, and were able to walk away with a slap on their wrist, simply after the day was over, wiping their face and taking the image down. I cannot take my face off, and neither can these black and brown students here, where they have to walk in spaces that are not inclusive of all their identities here at Simsbury High. So yes, in this very month, the month that started as Negro History Week that my ancestor Carter G. Woodson and countless others fought for, has encountered much turmoil this year alone. The Greater Hartford and Connecticut State NAACP demand that Black History curriculum in the town of Simsbury is strengthened. The teachers and staff are trained quarterly to be culturally responsive, and more minority teachers are hired to be reflective of the student population. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Isabel Ceballos. I'm a resident, and I'll share my address with the clerk after. I'm here as an educator and also as a mother of a student who attends one of our elementary schools. The history of blackface goes back to the eighteen twenties, when as a form of entertainment for white people, minstrels would paint their faces black in a racist portrayal of blackness. They would act out exaggerated caricatures of black people that was utterly demeaning. Plantation owners and politicians used this form of entertainment to enforce slavery. I'm aware that many of us may know this here, but many of us here in Simsbury don't, right? As people, we really need to stop decontextualizing this racist act. Blackface, even if conducted by ignorant adults or children, minimizes the severity of one of the most horrific time periods in this country's history. This cannot be a moment where we say as a district, oops, it was an innocent mistake, they didn't mean it. This district, as far as I'm aware, has had a history of racist educational practices, going back from the nineties with fifth grade Slave Day, a field trip at Camp Jewel by one of our elementary schools, to earlier this month, a second grade traditional powwow. How coded we use the word tradition here. As a school district, I urge you all to step in and step up. Our children deserve more from their education. The solution is not a limiting conversation of just diversity and inclusion. It is about equity and justice too. In order to address the seriousness of this systemic problem that we have in our school district, we have to start asking the right questions. Diversity asks, who is in the room? While equity asks, who is not in the room and trying to get in? Whose presence in the room is under constant state of erasure? A minimal reaction to blackface will tell our students, our children, my daughter, that black history does not matter, that slavery is no big deal. It is unacceptable, unforgivable, and racial violence. Thank you.
My name is Manu Looney, and I'm a ten-seater Glenn in West Simsbury. I didn't really prepare anything, just jotting some notes down as I'm listening, so I just wanted to mention that I graduated, my husband and I both graduated from Simsbury High in ninety-four. I'm Indian, my husband is black, and we, you know, back then I experienced a range of sort of racial issues and sort of remarks made to me and uncomfortable situations. I started, along with two other friends, a club called United Strength. I have no idea if it still exists at Simsbury High, and to try to do something, to make a change. We started getting involved with the Connecticut Forum. We really felt like there wasn't anything happening. There were no diversity trainings, people didn't even understand, they were making mistakes. So I went, I was sort of, I lived in the DC area and was reluctant to come back. I have three girls who are of color in, in the Simsbury school system, and I have to say, I was very pleased when I came back. But I did find myself sort of counting heads of how many people of color were in the room as I'm watching a first grade performance of some sort, and I was pleased that it was, it was greater, and it was, I felt sort of very, and I feel like they've had better experiences than I did, and I'm, and I love living here. I love Simsbury, I think it has a lot of wonderful things to offer. I just want to mention a couple of things that I think might be helpful when we move forward. I think one of the challenges possibly with the overall messaging that occurred with this incident was that there was a lot of, we're so great, but we know this also happened. I think it's important to send a strong, firm message without any, but we're also great. It's, no, this is it. My message is, this is not acceptable, and I'm not gonna talk about how wonderful we are as well, because I think it's not, it's just, there's something about a powerful message is important. I also think we're talking about trainings, and I didn't realize it wasn't required of the kids. I think when we're talking about trainings and activities and diversity initiatives, they have to be consistent and routine. It has to become a part of the culture. It has to be a part of something that, so if somebody were to say something, they would feel very odd, they would feel very strange, it's against the grain, because everyone's talking with the same set of expectations and words. I also think, looking at implicit bias with teachers is really important. You know, I think that implicit bias is stuff that we don't even know we have, and that's a really critical thing that many, we all carry, and it's important to be aware of it, not just once, again, consistently, chronically, like this is a regular thing that's required of all students and teachers.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Anya Metha. I'm, I live at forty-two Banks Road in Simsbury. I've grown up in Simsbury, Connecticut, and I'm currently a junior at the high school. So I just wanted to talk a little bit about the atmosphere at the high school here and what I experience on a day-to-day basis. As a student of color, I definitely feel the lack of diversity on a personal scale, but also I see it on a larger scale within the halls every day. And there is a sense of superiority, I feel, with the white community in our school, even if they don't mean it. There are many people who consider themselves to be allies, but on the other hand, I hear the N-word uttered every day in the halls. And it's something that the teacher hears and just shuts their door. They shut their door on an opportunity to educate another student on the history and effect of that word. And that is something that, to me, is very upsetting and should be taken into consideration as we move forward with the discussion of race relations in our community. That teaching integrals or teaching world history is not more important than teaching somebody how to be respectful of another culture, of another race, of another person. Thank you, that's all.
My name is George Harris, twenty Fairview Street, and I am the senior minister of First Church of Christ in Simsbury. I am also trained by the United Church of Christ in Connecticut as a racial justice facilitator. And perhaps most importantly, I am the proud father of Abby Harris, a beautiful and brilliant brown-skinned girl, a junior at Simsbury High, who is, as we speak, playing with her varsity hockey team, the first round of the state championship tournament. Go Trojans!
You better get out of here.
Abby came home from school today and made this totally unsolicited comment. "We," meaning Simsbury High, "we really suck at dealing with racism, but we rock at responding to kids with special needs." There is a lot to unpack in this short sentence. First note, Abby begins with "we," not "they." Simsbury is her school. In this mostly white community, my brown daughter has made a wide and diverse circle of friends, both white and students of color. Abby is a Trojan through and through. That said, Abby doesn't have to think twice to name the racism she and other students of color have observed and experienced, and the lack of a meaningful or effective response from the administration. And she followed this matter-of-fact statement about racism to tell wonderful stories about all the amazing ways her friends form loving, meaningful, supportive relationships across their differences in ability and need. Her real purpose this afternoon was not to throw shade at her school, but to celebrate and the extraordinary way Simsbury High responds to special needs students. I'm with Abby. Our Simsbury school district is deservedly recognized for its commitment to special needs students. We have developed specific programs to fully integrate these students into the life of the school, to break down stereotypes, to create understanding, and build up relationships. Think about that. Though a small minority of students have special needs, Simsbury makes a huge commitment to make sure they thrive as a part of the fabric of this community. What would it mean for our school district to make the same commitment to students of color? Understand, in making this analogy, I am certainly not saying students of color have special needs, at least not in the way the term is used to describe disability. But students of color, in particular black students, absolutely have a unique history and current experiences of racism that deserve a strong, bold, systemic commitment and response to expose bias, name privilege, break down stereotypes, create understanding, and build up relationships. Imagine if our school district became renowned, not just for the way we respond to students with special needs, but also for the way this predominantly white community responds to students of color. The only thing lacking is admitting we have a problem. Abby has given us the words for that, and making a sustained commitment to do the hard work required to make it so. Go Trojans!
Thank you.
My name is Kiana Riddick, and I live at seven Hitchcock Circle here in town. What, listening to a lot of the speeches, what angered me the most is when I heard that calling this incident an isolated incident. It is not. My daughter went through this in eighth grade. We were told changes were gonna be made two years ago. She's now in tenth grade. Nothing has been done. We were told about this diversity training back in eighth grade. Nothing has been done. She refuses to go to the high school. I had to sign her up and hope and pray that she get accepted into a crack school, which she did. She thrives at crack, she loves it there. She refuses to go to the high school. My son will be in middle school next year, well, sixth grade, which is not considered middle school here, but he will be in middle school, and he doesn't wanna go to Henry James. I told him Mr. Baker is there, which he loves Mr. Baker, he's a great principal. He doesn't wanna go. The kids here in town are not, I don't consider Black History Month as, it's a teachable month, but it should be throughout the whole year. The kids are not learning anything. I have my fifth grader here. He can tell you, the only thing he learns about is Martin Luther King, mainly, and Rosa Parks. He learns what we teach him at home, and it's sad. I just want more to be done here in town. I love this town. I love it. Nine times out of ten, we haven't really felt the racism until my daughter got into the eighth grade here. Why these kids are bold, I have no idea. It is being minimized mainly by the kids' parents. Because they have somebody of color in their family, they think it's okay that their kids, their kids do these things, and it's unacceptable. My family's diverse too. You don't hear us going around saying the N-word. And that's my, that's my really only thing, is I just want more to be done. And as far as a mom who sent her kids to elementary school and that they get picked on all the time by mainly the teachers, you wouldn't think so, but after hearing what she said, I'm angry, because I get what she's saying, and it's true. So at these parent-teacher conferences that are coming up, we as parents need to talk and speak up and protect our kids, because if we don't, who will?
Thank you. Bring it down. Take the whole group down, David.
Good evening. My name is Patrick Lyle. I live at seventy-four Old Meadow Plain Road in Simsbury. I've been a Simsbury resident for over twenty years. My wife and I have successfully had three kids, two go through the school system, graduate, go on. One is still at home, unfortunately, and, but we, and we have a daughter who's now a junior in the high school. I was actually traveling outside of the country when my daughter told me about this incident, and I took the opportunity while I was traveling to send an email to the principal, just letting him know what my concerns are. And one of the concerns that I have as a parent is, having lived here for twenty years, I'm well aware of the incidents over time that have resulted in all of us asking the question, why is it in a school system where the children are so aware and have so many resources that they continue to show ignorance and lack of understanding and lack of empathy towards others who are either not as fortunate as they or are different than they? And part of it is education, which is what has been talked about this evening, but another part of it is when a atmosphere exists where someone believes that they can get away with something, that they will do it. And if you create an environment where behavior that is not what the Simsbury community wants to enhance or support is dealt with in a way that makes it clear to everyone that we're not going to tolerate this, then the incidence of individuals who have access, who are aware, and do things that are untoward will not occur. But if the school system allows it to happen or gives short shrift to it when it does, then I'm emboldened to believe that if I do it, nothing's really gonna happen, and we go forward from there. My daughter, again, asked me to come tonight because she was extremely upset about the incident, to the point where she said she finally started to get tired of it, because it just kept going and going and going, and it consumed everything, schoolwork, et cetera. it just kept going and going and going, and it consumed everything: schoolwork, et cetera. Now, I ask myself, why should my daughter have to be dealing with this in 2019? If it were 1869...
We're at 30 seconds.
Maybe I'd say, okay, but it's 2019. So we have to do better, and again, echoing the words, "we have to do better." And how we do better is that we follow through on the things that we say we're going to do. And we are able to show tangible results to the students and the parents and the educators, so that when this happens again, which unfortunately it will, the school can say, "These are the things that we did to make sure that the discipline was appropriate, the education was appropriate, and the response was appropriate." So again, thank you for allowing us the opportunity, and again, go Trojans. I really hope that we're going to do a better job with this going forward.
Thank you.
My name is Tina Williams. I live at 29 Banks Road. I have been a resident in Simsbury for about seven years now. I have a son who graduated from the high school a couple of years ago. I have a son in the high school, and I have a son in the middle school. So I have three African-American boys in this town. My older son, well, let me take a step back. I moved here, I was born and raised in Boston, but I moved here from Manchester, okay, which is a very diverse town. When I moved to Simsbury, it was one of the best days of my life. I worked, as, you know, as all of us probably have, to own my home. After growing up in the city, I feel like I'm a traumatized child, and I moved here for the nature. I'm walking distance to Strattonburg State Park. I love it here. I moved my oldest son here in the middle of junior year. It was unavoidable, just because of the transaction with the home. But I thought that my older son being, having the personality he had, he could handle it. Sociable, wonderful kid, all of the things you would want your son to be. And I told this story for the first time publicly a couple of weeks ago, but I'm going to tell it again, even though I hate saying it. During his senior year in high school here at Simsbury High, first of all, let me just say, when I first moved here, I was glad to see one of the boys in my son with the Camp Jewel with. So I'm like, okay, this is, he'll be all right, he'll be good, you know? I was very naive. I was naive thinking that good schools meant good schools for all children. Because my son came here, and I was at work, I got a message from a female friend of his. "You need to see this message that was sent to your son." My son didn't even tell me, because what we all don't want to admit is we're all conditioned, black and white, to minimize our issues. My son didn't want to hurt me. So this young lady sends me this message, and it comes with a, you know, a veiled threat, and is an image of a public lynching of a black man, surrounded by white people, young, old, children. And he got three images like that, and then an image of Doc Vader. I don't know what that was about. And I lost it at work, again, in a corporate environment where I'm the only black woman on my floor. So I had no one to turn to with this pain I was feeling. And it's worth noting that this is around the same time as Mike Brown and Trayvon Martin and all these things happening around us, before the election, mind you, but we know when it happens ever since then. I say all this to say that, did I make the right choice? I don't know. My son, it affected me deeply, deeply. Not too long after that, he wrote me a letter, a long letter, as long as these things I wanted to say to you till you told me I had three minutes.
Send those to us if you'd like.
Yeah. And he said that he wished he were lighter, that he wasn't as dark as he is. And if anybody knows my son, and I'm sure, you know, this is disappointing as well, because I go to basketball games in town, I go to school functions in town, 95% white, and I come here, this is the most black people I've seen in a long time.
I'm sorry I have to limit you to your three minutes, but please send your...
Yeah, I will. But I think it speaks to the indifference of racism. That's what we're dealing with here. The white people, I mean, across the board, not just in this town, and I moved here because I have dear friends who are white, and I love them, and I wanted to be in a town where people were like me, white or black. And we need to, as a school district, who have the resources, to give these kids cultural, culturally-centered education. It takes very, very little to give them what they need in this school district, and that's all I have.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Ainsley Thompson. I am a junior at Simsbury High School, and I live on 40 Musket Trail. Something that I just wanted to talk about is I've grown up through the school district. I went to squadron line, then to the middle school, and now I'm in the high school. And something that I have found is that the students and teachers at this school, as said before, pride themselves in being colorblind. And I find this truly detrimental to the way that people are trying to move forward in this movement of eradicating racism. First of all, being colorblind is not a good thing. Racism is something that we need to look at, because being black is your culture, it is part of you. And saying that we are colorblind makes it seem like we are pushing aside the fact that people have had to go through death, lynching, the KKK, so many things that I didn't learn about until this year. I had to educate myself in that. And I think that something that I also just was thinking about was that someone said today that it was an isolated incident. And I have seen this in my own classroom, in a sociology classroom, which is supposed to be a place where people are able to speak freely about issues that seem to be more probably liberal than in other situations. And in this case, the one African-American person that I can speak of as an adult at this high school was, said, we're talking about a rule at the high school that you're not supposed to have your hoods up in class. And this boy said, "Yeah, you know, this track coach, he always talks about that, because he has a whole lot of experience with hoods." That is exactly what the problem is. People say it's isolated. I see it every day. And as someone who is clearly not of a colored race, I have friends that experience it on a day-to-day basis. I have friends that have experienced it from educators this year. And so I just think that we need to look at not only the education that people are receiving in high school, but also in the younger grades. Teaching kids that colorblind is good is wrong. And I think that also teaching kids that, you know, while we might have had issues with slavery in the past, we're making strides. That's not right either. Slavery was literally like 99% of our country's history. So, yeah, that's all.
Thank you.
Hi. Well, I'm Kadeja Riddick, and that's my mom. And I went to Simsbury High School from sixth grade to eighth grade, and I experienced racism within this town, and I never have before. I, to be honest with you, my parents educated me on racism, but I never felt it, or I never felt that I was different, until eighth grade, when Donald Trump was becoming president. During the school year, people were coming to school with Donald Trump hats, Make America Great Again shirts, going like this in our face with it to black kids, and like, me and my friends felt different. And that's when I knew there was something different about me. And the only person I felt comfortable going to was Ms. Thompson, who was a black social worker in the school. She wasn't even supposed to have us in the room with her like that, because she's not a teacher. But we all, as black kids, one day went into her room because we felt so uncomfortable. When we went to the school, when I went through this, we fought back with a peaceful protest, you could say. We wore Black Girls Rock shirts and Black Lives Matter shirts during the police brutality and the people, black people getting killed. We were to help us and make us feel better about our skin color. We were asked to take those shirts off. And nobody said anything to the kids who were not skin-colored about taking off their Make America Great Again hats or the Donald Trump hats. And that's when I felt different. I knew there was something wrong. Me and my friends were dressed as the black kids in school. I, that's when I got, like, upset. And we had to fight back to a certain degree. One time, this boy, I'm not going to say his name, he put his hands on my friend, and he was away. So he got slapped by my friend. My friend got in trouble. He did not get any consequences. That's when that was unfair. During police brutality in school, I remember in eighth grade, I came home to my mom, telling her how, and when I was in social studies, how this kid, when we were talking about the police brutality, how this kid said it was Trayvon Martin's fault. He should have took his hoodie off. How is that his fault? He was an innocent kid, walking around with the hoodie on, getting followed by the police. We need to get educated more. I didn't get taught about Black History Month in school. I got taught about Martin Luther King. Obviously, we were taught about Martin Luther King from when I was in second grade to, for as long as I can remember. I no longer attend Simsbury High School or any Simsbury public school, because I felt different. I felt unsafe, and I felt I was treated unfairly, not by only the students here in the school, but by the staff. And I felt unsafe walking downtown with my friends. Everybody used to go, after, in eighth grade and seventh grade, everybody used to go downtown after school and hang around. But you know what? People say these parents don't know what their kids are doing. Trust me, they do. These kids were in the car screaming, "You're ghetto," blah, 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 other racial slurs, in the car when their parents are driving by when we're downtown. That was so unfair, and I came home crying to my mother about it, because I felt I was different. I wish, there just could be a change, because it's not fair to the kids who, like, attend Simsbury High School, who are colored. I'm now in a new school. I'm in a crack school. I have no problem there whatsoever. I, like, I just thrive there, because I feel, like, I feel comfortable, and I felt like people respect me for my skin color. And we have white kids in our school. They don't, they love us, like, we, like, we create a bond. It's like, you feel like you're in an actual community. Then when I realized I have to come back to this town, it's not that I don't like this town, it's just I feel like I'm seen differently. When I walk around this town, I feel like I'm seen differently. People look at me like I'm odd, like, I don't belong here. This is a town, this is not somewhere, this is, it doesn't say white people only. Like, I could be where I am. And I just feel like these students need to be educated more. And like they said, my friend in the background, she still goes to this school, and she tells me this every time, like, every time something happens, I got the message of the picture when the girls posted it. I do make them myself. Don't, you cannot tell me that these girls did not know what they were doing. You cannot tell me that they were applying too much.
Okay, thank you. We're at four minutes now, so I gotta, I gotta, I'm sorry. But thank you so much.
Hello, I'm Juliette Malrae Segura. I live at 370 C West Mountain Road. I moved here recently with my family from California. My daughters are both black students here, junior and senior. In fact, my daughter, Amina, has spoken with you, as well as written letters to the NAACP and the newspapers, sat down with the principal at the school and the vice principal. I'm here because she's sick at home, so I'm not prepared, but, you know, I have worked on as Human Rights Steering Committee in California. I've written papers on race, and I have taught my daughters black history. I'm multiracial myself. My husband is a minority. And it bothers me that there are, there truly is, as we've been told, no black history. Speaking of Martin Luther King and a little bit of Harriet Tubman is not enough. You also need to speak on the inventions, what has been accomplished by black people throughout this many centuries here in the United States, and also what the basis of racism, blackface and such, why it is and why it is not good. I know that when my daughter spoke with the vice principal, she discussed this diversity group that you have at the school here, and asked who was on, and was told that there are teachers, and that there are just now opening as students. When she asked about the lack of diversity of teachers, she was told that black people just don't want to move to the suburbs. I can tell you by writing a paper on diversity and the tipping scale that that is not true. So I really hope that you take that to heart and you start looking, because there are people of color that would love to teach at this school, and there are students here that would like to see people that look like them. I just wanted to make that clear, and also that my daughter has expressed what happened after the announcement after the blackface incident, that students did come to school wearing the Make America Great hats. They flitted at them. The announcement from the principal, making it more about media than the incident, and saying that it was just an accident, caused students that were black to cry, to get angry. There was a lot of shuffling. When my daughter expressed herself to you and to other teachers, she was told by a close white friend that, "Why is she being a bee about the blackface?" So there is a lack of empathy and understanding that needs to be addressed. And also, there was...
30 seconds.
Okay. To finish up, that this can spread not only to people of color, but also people who are gay, because there are people being attacked and saying, you know, "Now I know, I can be next." People were also saying, "Well, we can do this to these people," and now the students. I don't want to name students of what she wrote down, but there is a cross now of attacks on people that are just not standard as the kids are considered here. So, thank you for listening, and I look forward to seeing differences.
Thank you.
My name is Resina Reynolds. I'm actually the parent of Justina Gilbert that stood up here. I'm from East Hartford. I'm not from this town, but I do have friends and colleagues that's not here tonight, but have called because they're too scared to speak up. And they do live in Simsbury and surrounding towns. So my question is, these are Caucasian women that are very, very, I'll just say, very, very scared to speak up. So that in itself is a problem, that they can't come to their community to speak up of what's happening with their children and what they see in your town. You know, we're not, I can't say I'm blaming the school. We as individuals, it's our responsibility that all this starts at home. Educate your children at home. You might feel uncomfortable about black history, but it's so important for you to know black history because of the simple fact of these two individuals. Maybe they knew, maybe they didn't. But as a parent, it's my responsibility to educate the pain and the hurt that my ancestors has endured, and not for people to dismiss that so quickly. It's our responsibility, even as kids. You might be afraid because of what your classmate might say about you, but it's your right to speak up. Put that fear aside and say, "Listen, ma, this is happening. Listen, dad, this is happening. Listen, Matt, listen, Sue." Speak up, because you have a right. Speak up because you have a right. Because a lot of our kids are hurting. They are in pain. That's why it's important to have these forums. But I'm disappointed because I don't see a lot of kids here. And a lot of kids are enduring this every day. They should be here to speak up. It should be mandatory that you do have these meetings. And someone did say that. It should be mandatory that these kids sit down and discuss on how they feel in history. It's not only black history, but it's not in our...
Thirty seconds.
I'm sorry. It's not in our history books. So that's where the pain is. That's why you don't know. Because it's not in our history books. But I just wanted to, I just wanted to say a quote from Maya Angelou. And I say this all the time to some of the people. This is by Maya Angelou. "I learned that people will forget what you said. People will forget what you did. People will never forget the way you made them feel."
Hi, my name is Olivia Romanowski. I live on five Clifton Drive in Sinsbury, Connecticut. As a student of Sinsbury High School, I would just like to say this is not an isolated incident. This happens all the time, in the classrooms, the hallways, the lunchrooms. And we can't move away from this issue and brush it off. It just, it can't happen again. It happened, and it didn't like this happen in the middle school when I was there. And they talked about doing things. They had a few board of ed meetings, and that was it. I'm saying it can't end here. It also goes as deep as the education. We take two classes of world civilizations, and I have never once learned about any other history besides European history, some slavery, which the only thing that we learn about African-American people is slavery. That's kind of not okay. As a mixed-race student, I would like to know about Africa. I would like to know about the history of Mexico. I would like to learn about just the other, like, the more populated places of the world. We don't learn about India. We don't learn about any other place. I would also like to talk about white privilege and how a lot of people here think it's not a thing. It's astounding that people don't recognize that by the color of their skin, they have certain privileges that other people don't have. And as soon as we start recognizing these, things can change for the better. I would also like to say that for Black History Month, we have announcements during the announcement periods. And as a student, I can say that that is not enough. The students talk through the announcements. I can tell you as a student, people don't normally pay attention to them. I'm sorry, but we just don't. We're caught up in talking to our friends because that's like the two minutes we have in the middle of class to just like, relax. I also think that it can't just be fixed with one assembly. It has to be multiple assemblies throughout the school year if it's not going to be talked about during class periods. We need to see the beauty of other people's cultures. I feel like that alone can help a lot.
Thirty seconds.
Okay. This incident doesn't go unnoticed by families and friends and people from other states. People have also talked about the diversity in the staff here. I lived in multiple other places. And it's just that I know there isn't any African-American teachers here in Sinsbury High. This also doesn't go unnoticed by students and families. Thank you, and I hope that we can do something to make this change.
Thank you very much.
I'm Teri Wolfish Cole, five Banbury. I've been in town almost 20 years. I've put one kid through the system. One kid is still here. I would take this opportunity to remind the board of a previous incident when the media was here in Sinsbury because of a bias incident. I remind you of a couple of years back when there was a swastika on the bathroom door here in the high school. Like this incident, that incident was discussed at great length in community social media. And the initial conversation was a lot of community members wringing their hands and clutching their pearls that such a thing could happen in Sinsbury. At which point, the Jewish mothers in town stepped up one by one to say, "Let me tell you a little more about my experience here in town and on this planet." And some community members responded to that by saying, "Thanks for sharing." And some community members responded by saying, "But not my kid. That wouldn't be my kid. That's not how we live in my house." But it can't all be somebody else's kid, can it? And they can't all be somebody else's kid. They're all our kids. And so I take this opportunity to urge you, the people in this room on that side of the table, don't wait for your LGBTQ students, your students of color, your non-Christian students, your neighbors. Don't wait for these people to come and tell you about their experience in this school, in this town, on this planet. Don't wait for them to educate you. That's not their job. Ask, like tonight. Don't make this an isolated incident. Take ownership and learn from the others around you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Olivia Nunez. I'm in 11th grade and I live at Three Old Barge Road. I have been going through the Sinsbury Public School system since I was five years old. And after this incident, not after this incident specifically, but I was just one of those kids that never realized I was different until someone told me I was or until I felt as though I was different. And, I'm sorry, I just feel as though the number one issue in Sinsbury revolving around this issue is that there is an incredible lack of sensitivity, perspective, and education and celebration of other cultures. I often find myself kind of being the person in my friend group who has to tell my friends, "Oh, you can't say that. That's not appropriate," or "That's offensive." It's not my job to educate other people's kids. I'm a child. I'm a student. I'm 17 years old. People go to school every day so they can learn and learn how to be functional human beings in society. I met with Mr. O'Brien, and he was very wonderful, about a couple of weeks ago regarding this incident and the steps I thought that the administration should take going forward. And what sparked me to go and talk to him was I had an incident in Spanish class with a boy who, when he made an announcement over the intercom about this blackface issue, which is 110% absolutely unacceptable 100% of the time, regardless of any kind of circumstances or where these people come from. It is 2019. This should not be something that needs to be watered down, sugar-coated, if you will. Either way, I had an incident with this boy in class because he proceeded to tell me after the class got into a debate about this issue that white privilege did not exist and that all of the things that people of color endure in America are simply us being over-emotional. And, he said, "We were over-emotional" and that there is no actual proof that people of color in America face different problems and different challenges solely based on the color of their skin. And I literally said to him, "That is not true, and you need to watch what you say because people have feelings. And you don't know what people have gone through." So my twin sister proceeded to have a mental breakdown because of what this child said in class. Either way, these are things that people say in school every single day, and it's not acceptable. I think going forward, that there needs to be sensitivity training. Kids need to learn that white privilege is a thing and that as a person of color, the world perceives you differently. I'm not saying that white people don't face issues because they do. They just don't face the same issues. White privilege is about how the world perceives you. People of color in America are perceived differently solely on the base of the color of their skin before they even say anything. And I think that's the number one thing that the kids in these schools need to learn. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Scott X. Esdale, and I am the state president of the Connecticut NAACP. And I am the person that the gentleman talked about that was quoted in the newspaper. Now, the three ways we can look at this is that some people blatantly just lie. Some people are naive. And then there's some people that are ignorant. Now, lying means that you're not telling the truth. Naive means that you've never been taught. And ignorant means that you know, but you choose to ignore. That's the root of the word. You choose to ignore and put your head in the sand. But this is not an isolated incident. And we refuse to listen to any lies. We refuse to be naive. And we refuse to be ignorant. Let me address a recent incident. Recent arrest of an active-duty lieutenant of the U.S. Coast Guard who stashed weapons with the intent of engaging in domestic terrorism and assassinating and targeting African-American elected officials, Jewish leaders, and progressive individuals protesting against police brutality. According to a New York Times recent report, which came out on February 20th, the number of white nationalist groups jumped up almost 50% in 2018. Hate crimes and attacks on African-Americans have increased since Donald Trump took office. Now, we've had an incident in West Hartford, Connecticut, at the University of Hartford, where a young lady took a dirty tampon and rubbed it on another student's belongings to strive to push her out of her dorm and terrorize her to move out of that particular dorm. No hate crimes were charged. In Bridgeport, Connecticut, I'm talking about racism running rampant throughout the state. There's a chief of staff for the Bridgeport Police Department, you can Google all of this. And he stated that he wanted to create a race war. Wanted to create a race war, and he didn't want to serve a parade, which was the Juneteenth Parade.
We have 30 seconds.
That was quick, three minutes.
It's no different than anything else.
I know, I know. I know. But y'all gonna hear me eventually.
I'm sure.
You got that right. But anyway, I say this all to say that racism is running rampant. This is not an isolated incident. And superintendent, you're dead wrong for not dealing with that principal who just slapped that little girl, I mean, those girls on the hand with a one-day in-house suspension. You need to deal with this. That's a hate crime. If white kids were being taunted, the children of those that were killed in 9/11, if Muslim kids were taunting white children and playing games and kidding on the individuals that were slaughtered in that particular incident, that would be all-out wrong. But you talk about black history. Black people went through this for 400 years. Not just one incident, 400 years. And they used that blackface. They used the KKK. They used Jim Crow. They used all these racist taunting, racist images against our people. And we will not go backwards. We will move forward. And it wasn't just black people that started the NAACP. It was blacks and whites that came together to start this organization, to end racism in this country. So it's always been great white people at the table fighting on behalf of making America great. But we're not going to let the races run rampant in America. We're going to come against them and have zero tolerance for this type of behavior. Thank you.
Thank you.
How's it going? My name's Curtis Looney. My wife spoke earlier. 10 Seer Glen Road in West Sinsbury. I'm probably the only person here who's been here since the 80s. I went to St. Mary's. Matthew, you probably got my email, my disappointment with the discipline level. When I was a kid, I was the only black kid in town. So looking out and seeing that there's so many more, it's great. I think it's a lot of progress. But you know what? I didn't experience all the things that you guys have heard today. Maybe one or two incidents in my whole life, in Sinsbury, in my life in Sinsbury. I only got great things to say about the town. It's really disheartening, actually, to hear that so many other kids who went through Sinsbury School System, through Sinsbury High School, that they had a different experience than I had. Maybe just I'm bigger than most people. But it's just disappointing that people have that situation. I have three kids in the schools now. One at Henry James, two at Central. So maybe at a younger age, you don't experience as much of the racism. It doesn't give me a good feeling going forward, going into the higher grades, that they're going to maybe come into this situation. I just hope that we can send a strong message. When I was a kid, I pulled the fire alarm. I got three days out-of-school suspension. I learned that a lot of people's lives are at risk and, you know, it's something you don't do around. You make mistakes. But you get punished for it, and then you don't do them again. This situation, we had an opportunity to, maybe they were just joking around. Maybe, you know, I don't know the kids. I don't really know the details of the situation. But I know what the response was, and it didn't make me feel good. I moved back here to raise my kids because I really love this town. And I just don't like hearing all the bad news. People coming in from out of town saying my town's a bad town. I walk around my Sinsbury Trojan gear all the time. So I just hope we do the right thing going forward. It's great that we have a lot of people out here. A lot of people, different opinions, different experiences in life. That's what it's all about, is just coming together and trying to figure this thing out. So I hope in the future, we won't run into the situation. But if we do, we'll act appropriately and try and deter the problem.
Thank you very much.
My name is Julian Forsberg, and I'm a senior attending Sinsbury High School. And as a student at this school, I feel like this issue was brushed under a rug as if it didn't really matter. And it's unfortunate. The only thing that seems to have been done is the open discussions during lunch, which I did attend. And at that meeting, I heard something that was very disturbing to me. And it's, there was a girl there. She said her friend, who is black, lives in Sinsbury. And she was staying after school to get extra help. And one of the teacher goes, "The Hartford bus already left. Is there something I can help you with?" So I think that's not okay. That's disgusting, in my opinion. And I feel embarrassed to, you know, I hate to say it, but I do feel embarrassed to be a part of this school at this moment in time. And I really hope that this issue does bring a lot of, I hope it brings a brighter future for our school and this town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Dr. Sean Robotham, 37 Jerome Avenue, Bloomfield, Connecticut. My daughter's a high school senior here, at Sinsbury High School. There's a lot I could say. I've been through a lot with this. I sat with Principal O'Brien and Superintendent Curtis. And, you know, we spoke for a good hour or so. We really got to try to figure this all out. And I'm just going to cut to the chase. Basically, board, you guys heard a lot of stuff tonight. But most importantly, you got to take to heart. The answer to all your questions, the answer to resolving all of this is coming from your kids. Everything that these kids said tonight is what goes on in this school. Everything these kids said tonight is what's going on under your noses. Everything that these kids say is what's going on every waking hour that they have to be here. So when you have these discussions and when you have all these trainings and when you have all this diversity, make sure you have these kids at the table. Also, like you said, we have a tri-fold system here. So we have the students, like I just said, the staff, and the community. So you have to make sure that these parents of color are there too. So you have to make sure that these parents of color are there too. And again, these parents that are white are there too. Because unfortunately, there are not that many white families here, but if we make this somewhat of a regular sit-down, then more can come, slowly but surely, and that we can have these conversations, and we can make a change. See, it's unfortunate that these young ladies did what they did, but for me, I'm like, awesome. Let's get this going. Let's get this rolling. Let's get the lid off of this, because there's a history and an undercurrent of racial disparities in this school and in this system. So let's get it rolling. So this is a chance, and I told you, Matt, to make lemonade out of these lemons, to make Simsbury High School a beacon for the nation on how to handle racial indignations that are going on throughout this country on a daily basis. So guys, the eyes are on you. Talk is cheap. Okay? You have these students, they're bleeding, and they're telling you what they want, they're telling you what they're dealing with, and it's on you guys to make sure it happens. And we also know that the teachers come with how they come. So it's up to you guys to make sure that they're getting that training with the community sitting there of all different ethnicities at the table, letting the teachers know what's going on and what the students are feeling, and how they may come across that offensive and hurtful. So again, guys, balls in your court, NAACP's here, and I think they should be here more prevalently, as well as color population as well, to sit at these tables and watch these things develop, and also have outcomes. Report outcomes to everybody. Use your communication tools to report the outcomes of what you're doing. Keep everyone involved, and everyone will be happy. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Gregory Callahan. I'm a senior at this high school. So I can't speak about the experiences of black students in this school, um, because I just, I can't understand what they go through. Um, but I can speak a little bit about the hatred in our school that is pretty prevalent. Uh, as an openly gay man, I've faced harassment and homophobic slurs from a lot of my classmates, oftentimes in the hallway, in earshot of even teachers and other peers. And so honestly, when I heard about this blackface incident, I was not surprised that something like this could occur, because, um, I mean, I knew that that hatred was, uh, inside the school all along. So I hope that this incident will, uh, show you guys that Simsbury High School does struggle with, um, inclusion and especially racism. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Deborah St. Germaine. I'm a resident of Hartford, Connecticut. I appreciate the opportunity to address you tonight. I didn't think I was going to, but I do want to echo what the gentleman just said. I'm a former teacher in Hartford, uh, 39 years, and I, um, know that the best guides to your change are going to be your students. And I applaud every single one that has spoken here this evening. It cannot be easy to do so. Perhaps even an advisory council for this board would not be a bad thing. The best representation that you can give them the most representation. Um, they do feel, and we all remember this, that you're unstoppable when you're young. You know where you want to go, you know the way you want it to look, and them as your guides would just be a wonderful thing. I also want to say that as a resident of Hartford, I saw this as only two towns away. It was in my paper at the same time happening in Virginia, but I am a mother, I'm a grandmother, and I'm a teacher. I represent many things, a woman, um, on all those levels. The breath was taken out of me, and I had to do something. Um, this is my something. I want you to know that, um, people were hurt. Your students are telling you that, um, everyone here is telling you that, uh, this hurts. Anything you can do, this was a very good opportunity, and any and everything else that you can do to remind these children that they are the humans that you want them to be, and that their humanity and everyone else's is what you want them to learn about and grow into in order to be functioning citizens of this society. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You're good.
Okay. Uh, hi, my name's Tim Gibson. I am a sophomore in Hartford. Um, was brought here today by my mother, and I'm glad she did bring me here, because this has given me an opportunity to speak. Everything I, almost everything I know about black history as a whole, I learned from her. I learned from my mother. Everything she learned, she learned from her mother and her father. In school, we all learn from our teachers. We learn, we learn math, and we take tests on it. We learn history, and we take tests on it. When it comes into black history, we don't necessarily take so many tests on it. And it's not something we learn about on an everyday basis, the same way we learn everything else. I feel as if that something like this should be something that should be learned about every day, not just from the teachers, but also from our parents, because our first parents are our teachers. And, you know, I can't, I can't relate to whatever it is my mother went through, or whatever it is my grandmother went through, my grandfather went through, right? But it's those people that we learn from first. And one thing our parents never want us to do is take a step back. We should always be moving forward. We, as students, should be the ones who make the change. We are the ones who are going to shape our future. All right? So I feel as if that this incident shouldn't be something that is taken as a loss, or something that's taken as a negative for the school. It should be something that everybody learns from, not just students, but also adults as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Board. My name is Ronald Holmes. I'm the pastor of the Gethsemane Missionary Baptist Church located in Bloomfield, Connecticut. But I'm also the president of the Greater Hartford Interdenominational Ministerial Alliance. And the alliance has grown into partnership with the School Board of Hartford to assure that education and equality is across the board. We've also partnered with the NAACP to assure that racial harmony is in place. And tonight, we stand, and we are appalled. We're upset and just at dismay. When we think about the incident that has occurred, one of the things that comes straight to mind is a Bible scripture that says, "How can two walk together except they agree?" And the agreement must be that this kind of behavior is okay, because nothing's done to stop it. I'm appalled that I'm looking at a board that no one on the board looks like me. I'm appalled to hear students say that teachers conform to students speaking irrationally about race. I'm simply appalled, but I'm not surprised. I'm not surprised, because the Bible also tells us, "The blind leading the blind will end up in the ditch." It seems to occur that Simsbury is in a quick hurry to find itself in a ditch. Here's our opportunity to really make a change. Let's become proactive instead of reactive. If we're going to really put in social sensitivity trainings around race, then this is something that shouldn't be opt-to-do, it should be mandatory, not only for students, but for teachers as well. What happens to the recruitment of teachers who are well-qualified to come into this district and teach students, not only students that look like them, but students who don't, so they have an opportunity to learn of something different? We've heard it tonight, and I won't echo it and beat it dead horse, but there's something in our society that's called white privilege. And white privilege allows these type of things to take place, and then later, no one is held responsible. Where's the zero tolerance? Tonight, you have the opportunity not only to hear us, but to be active in making a change. I want to be a part of that process. So it's not just a speaking moment tonight. As we've joined together with the NAACP, we want to join together with this board. What we can provide to you is we can provide you with names of individuals that do centralized training about racial sensitivity, and to do it on a level of adults, and to do it on a level of children. The problem is, it can't just be tonight. Gotcha. Can't just be tonight. Bad mic. You give a mic to a preacher, I'll go. The point of the matter is, we can't just let this be an isolated situation. We want the Greater Hartford Interdenominational Ministerial Alliance, we want to be a part of a solution. We don't want to come back after something worse has happened, and we're on the road to there. Here's our opportunity to really make a change, and we want to be a part of that. Again, we've partnered with the School Board of Greater Hartford, we've partnered with the Police Department, we made sure that that officer who made those comments lost his job. And we did it to make sure that everyone felt safe, and especially those of color. Thank you for listening. I'm welcome, and I'm ready to help. Please give me a call.
Thank you. You can hear the bar, we'll give you a minute. There you go.
Hi, uh, good evening. Matthew Antonetti from 3 Smokey Ridge Road in Simsbury. I have two kids in the school system. Um, I think, you know, coming off of, uh, tonight, I think it's definitely evident that this isn't an uncomfortable conversation. It's actually a really healthy, um, really important and enlightening conversation. Um, you know, one that's, I think, great to have. Um, a couple of points that I just want to, um, put out there, uh, something that's been a constant theme here, and it's been something in the back of my head, and I had, you know, wasn't thinking about speaking tonight, but really, uh, staff training, uh, I think on all levels, from the elementary school, middle school, high school level, is really important as to sensitivity, you know, the types of things that you've heard tonight, um, where staff are in earshot or otherwise, and the other types of comments really shouldn't be accepted. And I think from, uh, the board, you should set the tone that this is not the type of thing that we're gonna accept from our educators in the community. Um, you know, students will take that too, hopefully, uh, but that's a tone that's really set, I think, from the staff and the teachers and administration on all levels. Um, I'd also ask that you also take a look at, you know, you have coaches and others who are not accredited teachers, who also have a lot of interactions with our students. Uh, and I don't know if your coaching staff, uh, gets the same training, uh, in diversity and sensitivity that your teachers do, but they really should, because they can impact someone's self-esteem and worth and, uh, and, you know, view of self just as much, if not more, than certain people, uh, on the teaching staff. Uh, so they certainly should get the same training as to, uh, use of internet and, uh, you know, Instagram and stuff. I see what some of the coaches do there, and, you know, who are not, uh, trained teachers, and it concerns me. Um, so I think you should also look at your coaching staff as well for training. Uh, another thing that was mentioned here, which I can't agree with more, is the curriculum. Um, I think there are really some gaps in a broad curriculum. Uh, we come, I come from a diverse religious background family, and, um, you know, my daughter was in eighth grade, had one of her classmates, you know, say, you know, "Hitler, who's that?" Um, you know, that's someone going into high school next year. Um, and so I think on all levels, you know, talk about, you know, Martin Luther King Day, or reading the Dyer Van Frank, that shouldn't end there. Uh, so, um, I really think that the curriculum needs to be looked at for a little bit of a broader scope, because
We have 30 seconds.
Because something's getting missed there. Um, so, you know, thank you. You know, hopefully you take these comments to hearts and, you know, have some change going forward. I think it's a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Reverend Dalen Greer. I'm the pastor of Bethel AME Church of Bloomfield, Connecticut. I'm also the vice president of the Greater Hartford Interdenominational Ministerial Alliance, and I stand with so many who have stood to say that this event is completely appalling. Uh, my question, my statement is, what seat are we sitting in? And as we hear the comments that are mentioned this evening, we have to ask ourselves, what seat do we sit in? Privilege is a special right, advantage, immunity granted, or available only to a particular person or group. Education is a right, it is not a privilege. We need to make sure that the seat that we sit in ensures that quality education is given to all of the students in the Simsbury Public School System. All of the students have the right to a quality education. But when you sit in a certain seat, we recognize that this school district is number 14 listed in the state of Connecticut. It is number 469 nationally. 93% of the student population are white persons. 3.6 are considered Asian, and 3.3 are listed Hispanic. We do not list the African-American population of students in this school district. And so when we look and think of the seat that we're sitting in, this school district has 1,423 students in this high school. If there are 165 that are bused or coming from Hartford, are we concerned about the 165, or that 3.6, or 3.3? Or are we only looking from the vantage point of the 93%? So many testimonies of young persons
We have 30 seconds.
Who look like me, said that they feel like there is no concern for their education, for their personhood of who they are. I ask the question, how do they feel when the board does not look like them, any person, or the administration, or the staff of the high school, where there are no persons of color that represent them in the high school? We have to look at diversity training.
We have three minutes now.
Uh, we have to, thank you. We have to look at diversity training, make sure that there are assemblies for all cultures throughout the year, and make sure that our focus is not only on proficiency, but on diversity and cultural awareness. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Good evening, Board. Um, my name is Deborah Bell, and I am a Hartford resident. Um, but I had the honor, and, uh, I'm gonna take you all back. I was one of the first bused students to attend Simsbury School System in 1969. I went through the entire school system from first grade through 12th grade. Now, that was during the time of the Civil Rights. And trust me, Simsbury did everything in their power to make us acceptable, made sure we were treated correctly. No one disrespected us. If they looked like they were gonna say that N-word, they ate them alive. Their parents got called. Everybody knew to respect us, and we knew to respect them. There were several things were implemented during that time to make sure that we were acculated into the school system and felt comfortable. Because, mind you, I'm a five-year-old going to an all-white school and had never encountered this. We had a bus aide at the time that would, of course, be in the school during the entire day, uh, to make sure what we need, if there was anything that may be missing in any kind of aspect, but there wasn't, so she would help in the classrooms. We also had a, uh, another type of resource individual that would come into the school system, whether it was every day or every other day, to make sure of what was going on, what we were trying to get involved in, after-school activities. Mind you, this is Project Concern at that time, which is now Project Choice. From what I'm hearing today, Board, breaks my heart. I mean, it breaks my heart, because that was in 1969, and we were in Civil Rights. Excuse me, I don't want to cry, because I'm proud to say I go to school here, but from what I heard today, breaks my heart. I can't believe this is going on, and it's 2019, and I'm talking 1969, and I was here. And I know how I was treated, and they didn't allow any of this. Please, fix this. I speak highly of this school system when I'm outside. I'm a grown woman with two grown children, often making their way, and I speak highly of this school. But today, it hurts that this has went on, and it's going on of this school, but today it hurts that this has went on and it's going on so long and it gotta stop. You can't allow this. So think of ways to implement resources to educate everyone, but also to help those who are enduring these problems. Because this isn't going to fix overnight. You're going to have to work on this, but you're also going to need to help those that are hurting, no matter who they are, whether they're gay, black, Hispanic, and try your best to recruit more people so you can see more people that looks like them. Please, try your best. Like I said, I'm from 1969 and I graduated from this school. Please fix this in 2019. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Nkosi Lee, I live at 235 Branford Street in Hartford, Connecticut. My wife and I, we have four sons that attend Simsbury Public Schools. Our oldest is here in ninth grade, we have another in fifth grade, a squadron line, another in second grade and another in kindergarten. We moved from East Hartford to Hartford and we had filled out an application, you know, for the magnet schools. And we got a call from one of the secretaries from the Board of Education and it said we had, our son, our oldest son had been selected, you know, for the Project Choice Program. That was news to us and they said, well, you know, if you don't accept it, you know, we'll have to give it to somebody else. So we came and we checked it out, you know, he liked what he saw, so he said, alright, we'll give it a shot. And, you know, immediately, you know, he came in, we had to have that talk with him. He's, what, nine-year-old at the time, but still had to have a talk with him with the recognition that, you know, you're African-American, you're coming from Hartford, you're going into Simsbury. And so, it's not, to be honest, not any different talk that we would have with him anywhere he would go, but there's just that recognition of color and where you are, you know. Don't go and, don't end up in the principal's office, you know, don't, you know, do this. If you see this, don't do that, you know, because it's that expectation, the recognition of that's just how, that's the way it is, you know. And that's, I just come to say, I guess if anything, in dealing with racism, we all have different ways of dealing with it. And so you hear stories of some that had to withdraw their kids from school and how do you, how do you deal with this? How do, it's a disease, it is a sickness, it is very real. And, you know, I know my wife and I, we do our best to talk to our sons on how they need to handle themselves in any forum, let alone just school, you know, we could be at church, we could be at a music, we could be anywhere, there's rules and expectations of how you're going to handle yourself, representing us, you know. And she really goes at them about it, you know, but that's how it is, you know, and we would just want that same commitment, you know, that we don't want to have to keep saying that's just the way it is. My dad is, someone's dressed in a blackface, alright, son, but you still have a test tomorrow, understand, this is just the way it is, right? There was a fight at the dance, some kids were doing this. Yeah, son, that's the way it is, you know. So our recourse to him is you have to stay on your path, right? Keep doing what you're here to do, to go to school, but how do you handle issues? How do you handle trauma, right? There's a whole education being based on trauma-informed education, that's what happens with these incidents, it turns into trauma, right? Education, schooling enough is hard in itself, but then you start adding experiences that cause trauma in a place where you're supposed to be safe, then it becomes even more. And now everyone's just trying to deal with these things the best way that they know how. And that's how these incidents, it can lean into something much, much bigger. We try our best to tell, you know, teach our kids how to handle themselves, but these incidents, it causes trauma and these are things that manifest itself throughout life and that these incidents, how you handle with people, how you deal, how you interact, how you feel about yourself, and these are not the things that we have to be taught about at school. We want to learn, you want to grow, you want to become a better person, that's the expectation for our son. And I know that's the expectation you'd have for any of the kids that you have at your school, so just, your help is desperately needed, because I don't want my son to be traumatized at school. So we need your help in that endeavor, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Jeremy Wallman, I live at 30 Meadowlark Road. I have to say that I'm quite surprised and embarrassed to admit that I had no idea that the situation was as bad as it is, as I'm here tonight. And I just, you know, needless to say, it's completely unacceptable and the idea that we've gone backwards over a 50-year period and that we're so far behind where we were 50 years ago is unacceptable and something needs to change. And with all due respect, I feel this forum is not well-equipped to do the work that needs to be done. I think the voices that we hear, the voices of the students and the voices of our broader community and the resources that are being offered here are what we need to put in front of the discussion. So we should have the tables turned and these folks should be addressing our community with ideas. And not only ideas, but measurement, making sure that not only are we taking action, but we're evaluating if that action is effective, we're defining what goals we want to achieve and we're holding ourselves accountable as a community, as a school system, as a board and as a broader community in Hartford area. Connecticut has, like the rest of our country, has a, is evidence of racial disparities. And anyone who doesn't believe that white privilege is a fact is woefully ignorant and misinformed. And I think we need to educate our community. And I'm sad to say, I didn't realize that such level of education and understanding was required, but I ask that, you know, we take action, we hold ourselves accountable and we give voices to the, to the voices that are just starting to be heard now, those are the voices that are going to lead us to the place where we need to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Devin Hoffman, I'm a senior at Simsbury High School. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, so I have some notes on my phone, I hope that's okay.
Sure.
So.
Where do you live?
14 Fox Den Road, West Simsbury. So, one of the things that I found most concerning in our school following the blackface incident and just in general, is I've heard people say, "I'm white, so why should I care?" And I think this reflects a general lack of empathy that is shared throughout most of our school district. And I think that a lot of people have been discussing tonight, having these open forums and changing the curriculum in order to generate a greater sense of empathy. And one of the things that came to mind for me was how in colleges, how a lot of classes will have large seminars and then they'll have smaller discussion groups. So I think one great way to implement this would be to incorporate more Black history into our World Civilization classes, for example, but have smaller conversation groups where people can really discuss their ideas and they can feel comfortable. Because I know for me, getting up in front of such a large group can be difficult, but if you're in a group of 10 or 15, that can be really empowering to share your ideas. And a lot of people tonight have also brought up how Martin Luther King is often the one figure who's talked about with Black history in our school and I've definitely noticed that. So last year, in AP US History, we wrote a thesis paper and I wrote mine on the deradicalization of Martin Luther King and his legacy. So I don't have the paper with me right now, so I don't have all my facts, but it was about how white people over the course of history since his assassination have used him as this figure for peace and love and really belittled the parts of his legacy that were radical and that were really important in emphasizing Black power and other things like nonviolence during the war in Vietnam and socialism, actually. So I'm not saying all of those things need to be taught in our curriculum, but I do think it's really important to discuss how his legacy has been deradicalized and belittled by white culture. For example, one of the things I learned when I was doing my project was that.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. That the FBI actually threatened him while he was campaigning and that he, they basically suggested he kill himself or worse things would happen to him. So, that was the head of the FBI at the time, the head of one of the most important agencies in our government and I never knew that. So I think that this general deradicalization is an important thing to discuss, that it's not just of his legacy, but the legacy of so many figures throughout Black history. And I think that we can't just.
We have three minutes of.
Okay, yeah, belittle this idea of Black power and, you know, Civil Rights down to love and peace and joy and everyone gets along because it's a lot more than that. And, you know, I'm not really qualified to speak on that experience, but I think it's really important to open that up.
Thank you very much.
And the last point I just wanted to make really quick is that, the other thing is not just teach Black history, but teach Black people right now and the Black future that they have and the great things they're going to create if they can be empowered and move past these racist things in our country and world.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, my name is Frances Pardes Del Ledger and I'm from Hartford, I live in Hartford. I come here as a daughter of immigrant parents, I come here as an educator, I've come here as a mother of four Black children. Two are in college, one is nine-years-old and I have a son. He's, I have to check in with him every day to say, you know, to see how he's been treated. Has anyone said anything to you that has made you feel uncomfortable? How was your day? Things like that. This blackface incident and also the incident that took place at the University of Hartford, where I got my Master's in Education to teach, made me think about my daughters. I have two daughters in college and I think about the reaction that the young lady who had, who was, you know, who had the terrible incident take place at the University of Hartford, I think about how my daughters would have reacted. One would have reacted like her, the victim, and my other daughter would have probably been arrested because she would have reacted a different way. And I think about, either you're part of the problem or you're part of the solution and that's the reason that I became an educator. Growing up, I didn't have any teachers who looked like me. I went to private school all my life, I went to a very prestigious high school where I experienced racism and the only real difference between now and then is that it wasn't caught on social media, because there was no social media back then. So I think that a lot of education needs to take place. Children, young people, adults, parents need to be aware and educated on the effects of social media. There also needs to be, in the school that I teach at, in New Haven, we have an anti-bias, anti-racist curriculum that is mandatory for all educators, for all parents, families. Before we hire any teachers, staff, assistants or anything like that, they have to pretty much sign on that they will participate in this training. And it's an ongoing process. And a lot of times, people don't understand, they don't realize that there may be microaggressions, there may be.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. There may be, you know, racist statements that they make, but we need to review the curriculum, we need to educate the parents, we need to educate the young people and empower our children so that they know that they have a voice and encourage them to use their voices.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Leila Carrington from Three Sony C West Mountain Road in West Simsbury. I'm a freshly new senior to the school from California and I actually was really excited to come to the school and I noticed a lot of the stuff that started to come out from the mask of the school, which was the racism and also sexism from a lot of the boys at the school. And one thing that I wish could be fixed at the school that is part of the education that I hope will come to the future about Black history is also the use of the N-word, which for some reason in society, African-Americans think that it's okay that since they are Black that they can say the N-word. And just by adding an A at the end of it, it means brother, which is not true at all. And I think if we fix that issue, it can also, that'll help in the future, because right now, you know, white kids at our school think it's okay to also say it when they get the N-word card, which means they are allowed to say the N-word by their Black friends. And I feel that that issue really needs to be fixed, because it's really uncomfortable that they do that and hurtful that they don't realize what that word came from and what it really means. And I just wanted to say that today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think we're going to wind this up, we seem to have hit almost everybody, so if you are, if you have anything to say, we'll just have a few more people.
My name's Kevin Weichl, Seven Muscat Trail in Simsbury, Associate Pastor at First Church in town. As part of my role, I minister to youth and I just wanted to share a story that I just feel tonight is important to tell and as this conversation has been going on, I felt like I needed to stand up here and just share this specific incident. A few months ago, a student here at the high school, a student in our youth group, a student of color, sent me a text in the middle of the school day and he was upset. One of his friends had posted an Instagram photo of a lynching that had happened two days before in the Midwest and he posted it with a laughing emoji. And the student who texted me was so upset, he couldn't go to his next class. And came, we talked about it, picked him up and kind of, they addressed it, I won't get into all of how it was addressed, but what I want to tell, why I want to tell this story is just to put to bed to notion, many people have said this tonight, that what happened a couple of weeks ago is not isolated. That photo of that lynching did not go viral, but it just as well could have. And what I have heard from the students of color in the youth group that I lead is that they need to know that their teachers and administration have their backs and just the way that you're listening tonight is a really good step in that direction. But there needs to be more conversation on race in classrooms, but not discussion that allows opinions from all sides to stand. The facts of our country's racist past and the fact that racism remains in the air we breathe and the water we drink must be consistently addressed. I appreciate this forum and this community for care event that's going to happen, but the problem is that only those most interested and concerned about these issues will come and attend and it's the responsibility of the school and all of us as leaders in town to be fearless in our confronting of racism in ways that will bring education to all students and their families. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Brandon Rautch, I'm actually a resident of the town of Windsor and I'm actually an educator in the city of Hartford. I've been educating our youth in the city for the past three years now and I have to say, I love what I do. I'm very involved into like the Board of Ed, I'm very involved into the City Council, even I live in Windsor, so I'm involved in their Board of Ed, always going consistently to the meetings and being present. But one thing I found very interesting that out of all the board meetings that I've been to, all the city council or town council meetings that I've been to, and this is absolutely no shade, this is no disrespect, but, and the reason why I say it's no disrespect is because I was actually going to, before I got, went into education, I was going to go into law enforcement. I actually was getting ready to go into be a state trooper, what grad school called, and so I went a different path. But one thing I want to say here is that if we're going to have these open conversations, if we are going to treat everyone the same, I don't know if it's your normal policy and if it is, then that is what it is, but typically when I've gone to board meetings, when I've gone to town council meetings, there wasn't police present. And I see an officer in the back and like I said, no disrespect. And like I said, no disrespect, you're doing your job, I appreciate you. But it's, we have this thought that has been and drained into us for hundreds of years and that when you get a room of minorities, people of color, are savages. So we don't typically know how to act. Eventually, we're going to get confrontational, and we're going to fight you, and we're going to get loud, and we're going to get aggressive, and we're going to do all the kinds of things. And as you can see here tonight, that didn't happen. As you can see, we were very civilized. We spoke with high respect to everything that you guys are doing here. We're just asking for a few things to just happen. And so I think moving forward, like I said, if it's your policy, that's different. But moving forward, if we could maybe not have that present, you know, maybe not having the police here, you know, would actually invite more people, want more people to feel comfortable, don't feel like they're already going to be attacked or feel like they're going to be judged because the moment they walk in, they see an officer there on duty. And so that's just one thing. And then I just want to also bring one more thing to your light is that I too, even though I went to, I went to Hartford Public Schools. And in third grade, I'll never forget the incident of where I walked into the classroom. And like I stated, my last name is a Jewish last name. I walked into the classroom and my teacher, I was a new student, my teacher automatically thought, because she saw my last name, that I was going to be a white student. When I walked into the classroom, she said, oh, you're a ni- in third grade. In third grade. And I knew what that word was. This was in the city of Hartford. So what I want to say is, it is important for us to get very uncomfortable. A gentleman spoke earlier about how this brought bad media, bad attention to Simsbury. Well, guess what? There's bad attention that goes on in Hartford, New Haven, Bridgeport, New London, Waterbury. There's bad press that happens in those cities all the time. And so if we want to be fair and equal across the board, then let's get uneasy and let's get uncomfortable about when that bad press happens in our town too. Because at the end of the day, that is the only way that we're going to make the change, and that's the only way that we can correct behaviors that shouldn't be happening in the first place. Thank you.
I've got two more left. If anyone else wants to speak, let me know, but I'm finishing up after these two.
My name is Heather O'Connor. I live at 13 Carver Circle, Simsbury. I'm white. My two daughters are African-American. They attend Henry James and Central School. I come here now as a mom and a teacher in town. As a town, as a school, and as families, we need to have the conversations about racism. It is real. I see that now, both as a mom and as a teacher. We need to educate our administrators, our teachers, our parents, and most importantly, our children, although they know more than a lot of the grownups. We need to change the culture within the school system, within our town, within our world. Let's move toward humanity. If we continue to watch or stay quiet, we are choosing to be bystanders. It's 2019. We need to be on the right side of history and our shared humanity. And I want to end with Langston Hughes' poem, "Hold fast to your dreams, for if dreams die, life is a broken-winged bird that cannot fly. Hold fast to dreams, for when dreams go, life is a barren field frozen with snow." So I'm hopeful for our shared humanity and our steps forward.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Zach Vargas, and I'm a student at Simsbury High School. I'm in 11th grade. I moved here in fifth grade. I was actually a student of Ms. O'Connor. And I remember walking in and touring the school. I moved from West Hartford. And just from like my personal experience, and I've had this like conversation with my parents before too, like West Hartford is a lot more diverse than Simsbury. Like I experienced that as a second grader. And I remember like going to my fifth grade class, like touring the school just to make sure I was comfortable with it and like being shocked that like most of the kids looked like me. And like that wasn't something I was used to. Like I was born out of state, moved into Hartford, went to preschool, then I moved to Simsbury in fifth grade. And I think just from my perspective and what I want to echo is that, I heard another student say this, it's important for me to recognize that I'm white and my opinion, I can only imagine what most of these people feel like. I can only read about it, read the news, try and understand and comprehend, but I've never felt an experience where I've been like the subject of being targeted. And I feel like walking into school the first day and hearing the teacher say, okay, let's talk about this was a horrible idea, because kids are very, very passionate when it comes to ideas, and they don't know how to necessarily formulate it the right way, because once you just start thinking about it, you're going to let loose, like we're just teenagers, we can't really control what we say. And when you start debating, it just, it gets toxic right away, so kids are afraid to say like what they actually think. And I did go to the open forum lunch that we had, and I thought that was one of the most productive things we could have had within the school, because I debated with a bunch of kids, but it was all peaceful, and we were all able to talk. And then we all like reached a common ground, which is what the goal is here. And I can only echo what other students have said as well about the necessity to like open up the curriculum. Like when I hear some of my friends say that they don't know who like Jim Crow is and like all these other people, like those are like the most essential parts of our history, and the fact that we sugarcoat that all the time is horrible. I only look, I only know about blackface and its history because I do outside research on my own time about social issues, so I can try and be like more in contact with the world. And the main thing that I have told everyone is that like the importance for you guys to like get this right with the solution is like essential. You can't just shove like all 1,400 students into an assembly and tell them what they have to do, because a lot of kids already have trouble like looking up to an authority figure and listening to what they have to say. So if you tell them to do a direct thing, it's very possible that they're just going to deny it and do the complete opposite. So I think these discussions are helpful. I think you need to listen to the students on this one. There are a lot of things that I understand that you guys need to take control, even though we think we have all the power in the world. Like this is the one thing where we know like what's going on with the polarization of like how the punishment is been dealt and all this stuff. So I think it's important that, that this can't be the only conversation, like the open lunch things need to be like even like a monthly occurrence. I know some people may disagree with me on that, but going to it was one of the most productive things. And just going in the future, just like adjust, like listening to the students and like listening to what they have to say is what's going to get this done the fastest.
Thank you very much. Are we saving the best for last?
Good night. My name is Kwan Johnson. I live at 12 Hitchcock Circle in Simsbury, and I have three children. My older two went through Simsbury, the whole system, and my youngest is 11th grader here. I just want to point out that when I first moved here, bringing my children from the inner city into the suburbs, it was a change, and it was a lot of coaching that went on. But I want to point out two people here. Susan Hamrock Olinsky and Mr. Baker were two very important figures in my children's lives, and they really stepped up to the plate. They really made them feel comfortable, and they really helped them get acclimated into the system. And when things arise, they took full control. If I experienced something or something was said, I sent the email, they were on it, they handled it, and they made my children feel really comfortable. And my thing is, you heard a lot tonight. You heard a lot. It is a lot, and you heard it from all sides. At this point in 2019, going forward, we have to make change. We have to do something, because these, our children are our future. And if they feel like they can go ahead and be offensive, they can go ahead and be disrespectful, where's our future? Where's our future? And it lies in our children. So we have to, when things happen, discipline. Discipline. It has to happen in the school system, it has to happen at home. I understand, being a teacher, I couldn't do it, because all these different attitudes and things of that nature, you also have to deal with. So I understand, but we have to do better. We can't sweep things under the rug, we have to address it. And I feel like sorry is changed behavior. You have to change it, and it has to start with the board and trickle down. It has to trickle down. I'm not beating you guys up, no. I'm not saying this year you guys fought personally, but at some point, somebody has to take accountability and say this has to stop, and we have to do better. And again, Mr. Baker, Mr. Baker, Ms. Hamrock, I thank you. I thank you. Good night.
Thank you very much. Did we get everybody who wanted to speak tonight? Well, then I'm going to close. Is there something, would you like to speak? Come down.
Good evening. My name is Tiffany. I am a Hartford resident. I'm Jamaican immigrant. My partner, he could not be here tonight, but he's been telling me a little incident that happened to him in 2011, 2012, while he was a student of Newington, in Newington, and he came here for an away game. And it's been really eating at me while I've been sitting here listening to all these stories and all these people really, you know, bearing their souls and really describing their hurt. When he came here for an away game, he and another student were actually the target of racial racist slurs. And thankfully, he had a very strong, he has a very strong mother that made her frustration clear and made sure to reach out to the appropriate personnel and let them know how destructive language and hate can be. And as I sat back there and I really thought to myself, this is an incident that he told me happened in 2011, 2012. I'm 23 years old, he's 23 years old. We are enough years removed that he may not have went to the school with the kids that are here now, but I think that shows that there is a root somewhere. Something is not being handled correctly, if you understand what I'm saying. Something maybe in the community. There may be things that the school board, you guys can only control what goes on within the school's walls, but there's definitely an issue within the community maybe. And maybe there should be more community outreach and conversations, because clearly something is not right. There are many other words that I could use, but I know you all have been here tonight, and it's been a long night, so I'll just close up and say that I'm, hearing the younger kids that have got up and told their story has really made me very emotional. I went through my own different things in Hartford schools, but those kids, keep fighting, keep educating yourself, it makes a difference. You guys are the future.
Thank you. I want to thank all of you for coming to our public audience tonight. I think this is a really important conversation that we will continue to have. We take everything that you said, the feedback will go back to the board, we'll talk about it, we will find action items that we can take from it and move forward with. And we are continuously available to input that you might have. Please feel free, you know, we're available on our website. You are welcome to send us information. We will keep talking to the groups that have come here and asked to talk to us about moving forward. And I can't thank enough the students who had the, who had the strength and the courage to stand up in this room and tell us how they felt. They truly are our future, and making sure they have a safe place to voice their concerns, to learn, and to become who they're going to be is our biggest priority. So that is what we plan to work, to fix anything that we can and to keep moving on a positive trend. So thank you all very much. We're going to move into the rest of our meeting. You're welcome to stay. I don't know if you really want to, but please feel free. Thank you all. We're back to Board and Administrative Communications. I'm going to start with our friend Valerie Lee. Let us know, just stand up and tell us what's going on.
Hi. It's my first meeting, so.
Welcome.
So I have to overall comment about all the schools first. This is actually covering the span of multiple weeks since we visited because of snow and we also budgeted. So it's going to be quite a bit, I'm sorry. Start with the low with actually a violence prevention program that's sent from the Stanford Thomas. The program teaches students about the skills they need to reach out and include those who may be dealing with loneliness.
Valerie, we need to give you a mic. One second.
All good. I'm sure it's ringing.
Oh, actually, you could stand there. Why don't you just stand over there?
Teaches skills, thank you, teaches students the skills they need to reach out to include those who may be dealing with loneliness. This year, the Simsbury Public Schools participated the weeks of February 4th to the 8th. We also had Scott Driscoll from the Internet Safety Concepts, who was a former law enforcement officer. He spoke at the elementary schools on Monday, February 4th, 2019, from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. He covered a multitude of different topics, ranging from social media and apps to cyberbullying and child digital footprint as well. The program was primarily directed at the parents of the students for grades four through six, but it was a very well-accepted program. On Sunday, February 24th, we had Tom Skeen, a local resident, who presented talks, Save Lives, and Introduction to Suicide Prevention, and that was at the St. Mary's Parish Center at 2:00 p.m. The program was open to all Simsbury and its surrounding communities and is appropriate for high schoolers and their families. Again, another well-accepted program. Also, join Bob Maxon and the Simsbury Friends for Music Program for a spectacular fundraiser party at the Simsbury Inn on March 8th from 7:00 to 11:00 p.m. They'll have dinner, dancing, live performances, and a silent auction. Now for the schools individually, Tooten Hills recently celebrated two sixth-grade students. No, I'm sorry if I butchered the last names, but we had Noah Antidormy and Brooke Gleason, who were awarded the Connecticut Association of Schools Celebration of the Arts Awards. They were both winners, so congratulations to these two super talented students. The first Tooten Hills game night was a complete success. Families had a chance to play games of their choice for the first part of the evening, and then everyone enjoyed a competitive game of bingo to conclude the night. The donated games went to the classrooms for students to enjoy during their indoor recess periods. Also, join Tooten Hills on Wednesday, March 6th, for Pasta Night and their science fair. Their student scientists have been working on different projects and will be presenting it that night. There are science experiments and posters that will be on display from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. And then after you've toured the science fair, they also have Pasta Night. The PTO is currently taking reservations for 5:00 p.m. and 6:30 p.m. seatings for Pasta Night. They're filling up very fast, so don't delay to get your tickets. There will also be a fun raffle, so it's going to be a super fun night full of food and fun. And also for two, and the sixth-grade musical performance will be held on Thursday, February 28th at 7:00 p.m. and Friday, March 1st at 1:30 p.m. For Tara Field, they held their family fun night on February 22nd. There was music, games, pizza, contests, and prizes. And they'll also be celebrating Dr. Seuss's birthday on February, or Friday, March 1st with a school-wide stop, drop, and read activity. For Central, there was an after-school action club that sponsored a cans and coats drive to benefit Gifts of Love. The drive ran from Wednesday, January 23rd to Friday, February 1st, where students donated clean or gently-used winter gear to a non-perishable food items as well, and they participated. There was two boxes near the office. One of them was for each team of the Super Bowl, so the students could donate, but they could also vote on who they thought was going to win, which is super fun. The school family, the Central School Family Dance was also on Friday, January 25th, from 6:30 to 8:30 in the gym, and it was super fun, and everyone danced the night away. It was a great time. The Central School Auction, which is Central's biggest fundraiser of the year, was Friday, February 8th at 6:00 p.m. at the Hot Meadow Country Club. It was a night of dancing, dining, music, and bidding for a great cause. Now for Latimer. Students at Latimer are concluding their fifth annual student-led month of kindness. Latimer had their second family tree meeting as well on Thursday, February 7th. The program was started in an effort to help students get to know other students and adults across the building in all grade levels. And the February 7th meeting was focused on getting to know more about each other through games. This Friday, the teachers at Latimer are participating in a building-based professional development focused on the use of Google Forms classroom management strategies and the creation of a flipped classroom, which has already been sort of implemented in many of the classrooms at the higher levels, but I think it's super cool that Latimer's doing it too. The Latimer Lane community is also urged to come out on Friday, March 1st, 2019, for their annual Bingo Night in the gymnasium. For Squadron, they held their Winter Strings Concert on Wednesday, January 23rd. It was a wonderful night of impressive music. They also had their student-run Snowball Bash on Friday, January 25th, and it was a great night for all in attendance. Squadron also had their Super Bowl, which was also a can collection on Monday, January 28th through Friday, February 1st. And they also had a similar, like where they can vote on who they thought was winning, but it's a great cause, and it was super fun for the students. At Henry James, they had their mid-year Lion Pride Assembly on February 15th, which was a celebration of the year's hard work with performances from their pep band, Unified Theater, and hip-hop dance teams. Each academic team had students compete in a minute-to-win competition, and they had a three-point contest where the winner scored 11 buckets in two minutes, which is super impressive, and I am not that skilled. Culture Night at HJMS was rescheduled to tomorrow, February 27th, and will run from 6:00 to 8:00. There'll be great food, entertainment, and trivia, and the SHS Gospel Choir will also be performing there and are going to invite HJMS students to join in. They also had their annual Neon Night Dance on January 25th, which was also a wonderful night full of fun and snacks, and it was still one of my favorite activities from Henry James. and it was still one of my favorite activities from Henry James. On January 27th, eight Simsbury High School students and six Henry James Memorial students were recognized for their achievement during the Scholastic Art and Writing Awards Competition. The competition was hosted by the Connecticut Art Education Association, the CAEA. For students in grades seven through 12 across the state, the award ceremony took place at the University of Hartford Lincoln Theater, and the students will have their artwork featured in a gallery at the Hartford Art School. Henry James also had their Super Bowl and the Community Connection Service Club to donate to the Simsbury Food Pantry on January 28th through February 1st. Their HJMS open house was on February 13th. HJMS also had their Leadership Academy Meeting today at 2:30, and they're looking for more members to join. They urge students to stop into the school counseling office if they are interested in joining the club. And students interested in EV3 LEGO Robotics or Blocks CAD 3D programming are urged to attend the meeting on Thursday, February 28th, in the Library Media Center during connections period. Passes are available at the circulation desk if those students are interested. And lastly, for Simsbury High School, since it has been a few weeks, Kiss Me Kate also happened on February, their last show was February 8th. They had an amazing six shows, and even with some hiccups due to like snow and delays and some hiccups with that, they did an amazing job putting on the shows. The SHS Student Film Festival is coming up on May 3rd, where students can send in their films and see them on the big screen. Submissions will be shared up until April 19th for consideration. There will be, well, there was a community dialogue, as many people mentioned, during the SHS lunch waves about, with our partners at the Capital Region Educational Council, or CRAQ. They talked with students who would like to share their experiences, feelings, and ideas moving forward regarding the issues that we talked about earlier in the night. And February is Library Lovers Month, so we're being urged to go down to the Library Media Center to feature fun activities, book displays, and prizes. And they're making more announcements as the month is coming to a close. On January 27th, 2019, prospective engineering students from HJMS came up to the high school for Girls in Engineering Day. It was a fun day where we did welding. We were driving race cars using lathes, and we had an informational presentation with a student panel and an actual woman engineer. We also had a senior, Emily Steele, who was selected to attend the Metropolitan Opera's 2019 High School Opera Singers Intensive Program in New York City. She was selected as one of only 10 talented singers from across the United States and Canada to participate in this prestigious program. Emily will also attend an opera at the Met and will perform in a recital on the final day. Congratulations to Emily for this amazing accomplishment. We had the Battle of the Bands competition recently. It was a super fun night full of rock and roll and great songs, and the bands are always super amazing. The winner was the Conscious Club Band, but the runner-ups from Skyline 33 definitely gave them a run for their money. The Trojan Wall will be hosting its Winter Dance on Saturday, March 2nd. The theme this year is Neon Night 2.0. Tickets are going to be on sale for $5 in all lunch waves, and socks are required to attend. Also, please mark your calendars for Thursday, February 28th at 5:00 p.m. The SHS Unified Theater has a performance of Not All Superheroes Wear Capes. It's going to be an amazing event for everyone to come see, and I've heard nothing but good things about it. It's an amazing event. Come join the Culinary Arts Club. They meet on Tuesdays. And there was also going to be a school-wide volleyball tournament on March 13th, similar to the handball tournament that we hold at the high school. You can form a team and send in your entry package to the athletics office if you're interested.
Valerie, that was just amazing.
Thank you. I know it's a lot. I covered like three works worth of stuff.
And not only did you cover it, but you covered it very efficiently and absolutely excellent report. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. This Thursday, the 28th is, yeah, and it's not All Superheroes Wear Capes. It's in the auditorium. I believe it's right here.
It was right here.
It is 5:00 p.m. Yep, 5:00 p.m., Thursday, February 28th.
Thank you.
Of course.
So thank you for all your work in your first meeting. You are released. Good luck on your test tomorrow.
Thank you.
We are moving on. Todd?
I don't have a mic, but I just wanted to say that I really appreciate all the comments. Most people are gone, but the comments that people made tonight, I learned a lot. And I know that there's a lot for us to think about and to do, so I just wanted to thank everybody for their comments.
I would just echo that as well. You've given us so much direction and so much hoop for thought, and it is not lost on us. So thank you. And other than that, we have a curriculum meeting Friday morning. I'll post you. Keep your post at the next meeting.
Tom?
No, I can't add anything to what two colleagues have already said. But I will say this. Maybe it does work. I will say that there were two messages that I heard very consistently tonight. One of them was about curriculum issues, which I guess we'll get some discussion at the next curriculum meeting. And the other one was about recruitment of teachers that don't, quote, "don't look like us." And we've had a number of conversations about that, and I think we are very aware of the challenges associated with making progress in that area. But to me, what we heard tonight, I think probably provided some more stimulus for us to kind of move that up higher and maybe think more creatively and maybe think about some kind of investments that we might be able to make to try to solve that problem. And so those two things, I think, are good action steps for the board in particular.
Jen?
I agree.
Thank you very much. Jeff?
No, I just wanted to recognize again the students that testified that, you know, the courage they showed to get up in front of an auditorium full of individuals was incredible. And I just want to say that not only did they give us food for thought, but we can't just think about this. We really do have to act. We can't just keep thinking and keep having symposiums. We really, you heard it from the community tonight, and the time to act is now. So I actually have a question. I don't know if it's for now or for later, but do we have to vote on the budget tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
Brian?
Just to echo what Jeff said, and then to add to that, that picked a pretty exciting first Board of Ed meeting. Happy to be here.
No, I didn't ask it for that reason. Apparently, the house is, the house is not burned down. I haven't got that text yet, but no, I asked just because I didn't know if there was anything. Well, we got a lot tonight, right? Nice to know if there was anything that we may have budget implication that we may want to consider. That's why I was asking the question.
I think on those things, it would take time anyway, so that would be. Let me start with, I don't even know where to go with you people. Mrs. Lemke, Mr. Sullivan?
You're going to be voting on your new committees in a little bit here in your agenda. The Policy Committee will be called into session in March for a annual review of a few policies that were driven by legislation from last year, plus an intended review of the board bylaws, which have not been done since 2004.
She can't hear you.
So that would be one of the committees that's going to meet. And then, secondly, we will be calling the Personnel and Negotiations Committee into session because we are about to enter negotiations with our custodians. So we'll need some guidance from that committee, and Ms. Wild will be in touch about finding dates with those committees.
Thank you very much. Burke? Later. We'll see you later. Mr. Curtis?
I would just say that it was, you know, an incredibly important night for our district. And I think, as all the board members said, we heard quality information and quantity of information. And I think that some of the things we've put in place to start the conversations will help us to point in the right direction, but it's going to be about the actions, to your point, Jeff, and the planning and moving forward. And I know that my administrative team is completely supportive of that, and we look forward to working with you and the board for direction and moving forward. And I think, as I said, it's a very important night for our community and for our school district.
I feel the same. I think that, I think there's a lot for us to work through, and I definitely think forward motion is the only way to go. And so I'm looking forward to some of the work that we have ahead. Moving on, we have our Minutes of January, Minutes of January 22nd.
Move to approve.
Thank you very, thank you very much. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Standing. Next one, approval minutes of February 6th, workshop.
To move.
Second? Do we get a Sue first, Jeff second?
Whatever.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, so that was Tom, right? Ooh, secondary. Is that what you're saying?
Wait, wait. Jeff wasn't there.
All right, so it's Tom, then it's secondary.
I'll second. Sure.
Approval minutes, February 14th.
I'll move that to approve it.
Thank you. Todd, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on to Mr. Sullivan. You can, oh, no, you can't. There's no mic.
Just a couple of personnel motions that need to happen tonight. We've had a number of child-rearing leaves lately as our Simsbury faculty family grows. The latest is Sarah Grasso, music teacher at Tooten Hills School. Congratulations to our latest new mom, who this child-rearing leave would be non-salaried for the remainder of this year with a guarantee to return in the fall. So the motion, if someone can make that motion?
To move.
Todd?
Yep.
Thank you very much. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Curious.
And then three retirements tonight. One from Henry James, technology education teacher, Mark Hartunian, who has been in Simsbury, both at the high school and at Henry James, for 15 years now. You can see the date on that one is the end of this month. Mr. Hartunian has been out this year on a medical leave with the hope that he would be able to return. That did not happen for him, so now he's enjoying retirement. So congratulations to Mark. Our other two retirements are effective at the end of this year, both at Simsbury High School. Jean Darlington in the math department, 14 years in Simsbury. I would note that Jean has really grown our AP, our statistics program in the math department, really important growth area in that department. I would credit Jean with a lot of that work. And then Bill McCuey, who has ended his career with us after many, many years in another district, his last seven and a half years here at Simsbury. After hiring him, I assumed he was a good teacher because he was our AP physics teacher, and I didn't understand much of what he was doing, but he was really great at seeming what, at what he was doing.
I'll move. I worked with Jean at Aetna in the actuarial department quite a while ago, so before the 14 years. So I'll move.
Second? Anyone want a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So we're moving right on to our report on the 2019-2020 budgets. We'll go to Mr. Curtis.
So I have to think about how we want to do this. You can, why don't you move there, and you can see what's up here, and I'll go to the podium. Does that make sense?
Great. We'll give you a mic. We'll move over that. Yeah, that's handy.
Oh, you have copies?
We do have our copies.
Okay, all right, that's.
So we can stay or move? Okay.
Oh, we got Burke on the lights.
Woo!
Really?
The Oscars.
All right. Thank you, team, for staying. Appreciate that. Burke, are you flipping? That's not going to work.
Oh, the thing that hangs off?
Go by hand.
Can you target?
Why don't you just flip it by hand?
You know what, Burke? We're not holding you accountable for this.
All right. Great. So as the board is aware, this is the kind of culminating presentation of our budget process. And it's really, it's really a backwards design, so there's nothing that's going to be of a surprise tonight. We're coming out of a workshop at the last board meeting where we essentially let the board know we'd be coming in at a 2.5% increase. So I'm going to move through a stack of about 10 slides or so that frame this out, and then we can certainly answer any questions that you have. I know we have some line item detail and a few minor adjustments that we made, and we'll work with that format. So obviously, as you know, this process starts back when we worked with the Board of Finance in November. They provided us with a guideline, a cap, so to speak, of a 2% operating increase. And what we're always trying to do when we build this budget on an annual basis is look at the lay of the land, you know, what is the climate out there, the fiscal climate, and what are the responsibilities, and what are we trying to move forward in our district? So you can see some of the themes that we've put up there. Certainly, a new governor, and we have a handout later that will talk about some of the changes in his budget that will have an impact in this year's process as we move through in discussions with the Board of Finance. I mentioned the expenditure cap, and we know that there's always mill rate pressure, right? We've been in a comparative situation where we've had a higher mill rate than other towns, and we've really looked at that closely as a board in kind of mitigating that increase over time. And that's always a factor that we deal with. Listed on the right are some of the things that this budget supports that we've already talked about in great length. Most importantly, that we support our excellent academic options. There are no cuts in this year's budget at all. Programs stay the way they are. We're really focusing on keeping our class sizes in appropriate ranges within our guidelines. And as we get through these last couple bullets, really focus on some of the new staffing proposals that we do have that are in alignment with really our goals and our continuous improvement process. So there's the overall number, $70,877,377, an increase over last year's operating expenditures of $1.7 million and a 2.5% increase to the bottom line overall. A little bit on enrollment. I know we talked quite a bit about enrollment in this district, but the one point I wanted to make up on the figure, really the bullets below, we're only projecting a decline of 17 students across our over 4,000 students in the district. But our enrollment trend has shifted. So for the last decade or so, we've seen a pretty significant decline in our student population. Our projections are demonstrating that that decline is going to stop, and we're going to have a flat enrollment for the next five years, and then our enrollment will continue to increase again. So that's a very different factor for us in the budget planning process, and I'll get to that in a few minutes in terms of our ability that we've had over time to really have pretty minimal, minimal increases. All right. So I know that Neil gave us a presentation earlier in the year that had much more detail on staffing and enrollment history over time. I just grabbed a couple years to demonstrate to the board and remind the board and those community members watching at home that are here tonight that we have made those responsible reductions of staffing as our organization has gotten smaller. So just in the last couple years, from '16, '17 to '18, '19, we've declined almost 12 positions district-wide, 12 full-time equivalent positions. So this is just a little contextual background information for the board to take a look at. Per pupil expenditure is an audited number. It's a number that's filed with the state. It's a number that we look on on an annual basis. The Board of Finance often looks at. So there's the ranking data. It's pretty similar to last year's rank of where we were. I've listed some peer communities that we're often compared to. You can see their per pupil expenditures. Glastonbury and Avon slightly higher, Farmington a little bit lower. And on the right is the budget history I was talking about. So over a decade period with an average budget increase of 1.26%, while we've been able to move forward some really good program improvements, that's really due to the large decline we've seen in enrollment over time in a five-year average of about 1.4. So a few pictures to talk about really what our number-one goal is in the vision of the school district, right? We want to ensure on an annual basis, and when we're looking forward, that we're creating and we're maintaining really great personalized opportunities for kids. And I think it's something that we're very proud of, the diversity of our programming. It's something that separates us, particularly at the high school level in our program of studies. And it's something that's important that we talk about on an annual basis when conversations may come in about program reductions or enrollment in certain elective periods. So certainly, our theater program, our culinary arts program, our athletic program, and then our engineering program are just a sample of some of the great programs that we have in our district and opportunities for kids to really select pathways that are important to them. All right. So here we get into the nitty-gritty of the numbers a little bit. So the main drivers that we're going to talk about really focus around the contractual obligations, some of the program improvements that Neil presented to us. obligations, some of the program improvements that Neil presented to us during the workshop and in his presentation to the Board of Ed. And certainly insurance and pension on an annual basis is a really significant driver of cost for the district. Alright, so if you just take a look at our personnel costs, we know that we had a, a guide, some guidance or a cap of 2% and you look at just fixed cross, costs in our district listed across and above, you see the teachers' contract at a 1.55% increase. You see the other contracts all totaled up to be an increase of 2.1%. So actually our fixed personnel costs, if you roll forward, the size of our organization are a little bit above the expenditure cap that we had. But on an annual basis, we always factor in a reduced amount for retirements. We have 10 retirements this year, so that number is really the difference, we talk about this a lot, right, between an outgoing salary at the high end of the salary scale and then a projected mid-salary hire. So you've gained some savings in those positions, assuming that you're gonna replace all those positions. So when you just look at the in and out of the personnel costs for our budget next year, we're at a 1.75% increase, about $1.2 million, the largest driver in our budget. As we presented earlier on to the board and talked in public about needs of the district and ways we would capture efficiencies, I think Neil really captured it very nicely this year in putting it into kind of different, different buckets. So we talked about academic enhancements that are gonna be in the budget this year that we've moved forward, that the board has supported. That was expansion of our elementary world language program, taking that world language program down to fourth grade. We required a new elementary classroom teacher at Tooten Hills due to enrollment and there were some additional hours that elementary principals really advocated for and Scott Baker at the middle school advocated for, for math intervention at both the elementary and middle level. We also have some supports that we talked about and presented to the board earlier on about our social emotional needs at Simsbury High School, a top priority being an additional social worker, a director of school safety, Neil has talked about that at length, the realization that the scope of the work for both Burke and Neil has changed dramatically over time as school security has been a major focus across the country and certainly in our town. So to have a, a person that's an expert in that field, you're seeing more and more districts look for former law enforcement backgrounds to come into the district and work with their security staff, work with the hardening of the buildings, look at policies and procedures and really assist us in moving forward, we think that would be of great benefit. A computer technician at the middle school to help us move to the one-to-one initiative and some after-school stipends that actually the elementary principals advocated for in an effort to really expand programming at the elementary level. So we always look to, oh, just let me go back one second, Sue. Look for how we're gonna offset some of those costs. So we offset some of those costs through enrollment-related reductions. Those enrollment reductions are specifically at Simsbury High School this year. So there's a certain allotment of FTE, I believe, full fi, full-time, three full-time equivalents we're looking at right now, around there at the high school that we're looking to offset and some other non-certified reductions as well due to retirements and shifts in, in positions that will help to offset that overall cost. Insurance is the other large driver we wanted to talk through a little bit tonight. You see some historical information on top. More important is the line item down below where it talks about the projected 2019-20 increase and we can see that we're projecting an increase of $500,000 to the insurance and pension line item, under 1% increase, about .72 of the overall budget expenditure over last year. And this slide is busy, we realize it's busy, but it's the kind of rap on how the whole thing works. So if you look at the upper portion where it says additions, that's the contractual and personnel cost that we talked about. You see then the certified requests and non-certified requests, those were the buckets of the new staffing that we just talked to you about a little bit. And then there's some other, kind of other items that we've, we've presented in, in the workshop to you of a little bit more detail. Contracted services around security, some increased security services that we've put in place at both the high school and the middle school, the employee insurance line item, and then some increases in utility and fuels, some technology and software that if you have questions on after this Burke can provide a little bit more detail to. But all of that looks to be an addition of 3.78, almost 4% to the operating costs. And then the bottom part of this sheet is how we offset those costs through the reductions. So the 10 certified retirements that we talked about, the certified staff reductions that we've presented in prior presentations to you, the three FTE, and then the non-certified staff reductions and some insurance, some smaller reductions in textbooks and some other accounts, just to kind of tie out the sheet. But you take all that, it's a net down 1.28%, which leaves us at the 2.5 overall percent increase. Now, the Board of Finance talked to us about a cap of 2%. So what we wanted to present to the Board of Ed is that 2.5% increase is where we are in terms of hard costs and what we feel we need to move forward the organization in, in a really productive way this year, but we can engage in a conversation with the Board of Finance when we get to the table about the use of the non-lapsing funds. So there are $385,000 or so in that non-lapsing fund. That's a joint conversation and joint authority that the Board of Ed has with the Board of Finance in terms of how we utilize those funds. We can utilize those funds in a variety of ways we have in the past. We've utilized them to offset insurance increase, we've utilized them to offset some special education increases in prior years. It's there to help us in times when we need to move the number or have an emergency to deal with. So my recommendation to the board would be to approve that overall 2.5% increase, but no, we have a bit of wiggle room and an opportunity to have a conversation with the Board of Finance to get to that 2%, 2% number with the full presentation of the resources that we have in this budget. And I think that would be a really positive way to frame our conversation in March with the Board of Finance that this is what we believe we need to move forward. We're pretty close to that guideline, depending on how important that overall goal is and we know all the other factors that go into creating that mill rate, we could have a conversation about the use of those funds to move the number to 2%.
Could I just ask?
Sure.
Sure.
Two questions about the non-lapsing. First question is, if in fact we do approve this and the Board of Finance approves it as well, how much is left in the non-lapsing fund account? $385,000.
Right, so we would, to get to 2, we would need $344,000 of it.
Forty, forty.
It's only leaving 40,000.
Yep.
Okay, well, the second question is, does it make any sense at all to go to the Board of Finance and say, "Look, this is what we need to do our jobs and we don't want to use non-lapsing funds because looking forward, there might, we might have much more urgent needs for the use of that money than we have this year."
Yeah.
So we can preserve that, but at least $380,000.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would, I would seek guidance from the board on that, Tom. We can have that conversation either way. I think that the budget we do present is a 2.5% budget and that demonstrates what our needs are. They're, they're well aware of the line item, of, of the non-lapsing account, so it's going to come into the conversation, so it's just a matter of how that dialogue develops.
Well, can we, can we even?
Yeah.
Can, can we right now make any kind, as a board?
Well, Tom, let me see what everyone else thinks. So what else, does anyone else have any comments on that?
I have a question. The, is there a minimum that that account has to maintain or why are we sitting on it?
So, there's not a minimum and you can keep up to a maximum of 1% of your overall operating cost in that fund. The realization is depending on how current year expenditures go and work out, excess dollars can, can be put into that fund, we can pull money out on an annual basis. So the reality is for a couple years, we thought we were going to have to utilize dollars in that fund and we haven't had to, basically due to favorable insurance experience, so...
How long has that fund been in existence?
It's been five years, four or five years.
How quickly does it accumulate?
All depends on current year experience and conversations between our board and the Board of Finance onto what either goes in or what gets returned to the town.
Sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
No restrictions on how it can be used?
So long as there's joint agreement.
Okay. Wait, Sue has something to say. Tom? I got Sue on this, then your own.
I just, I just had two questions.
Yep.
One, given that we don't know what the governor's budget's gonna look like and the potential that we could be on the hook for pension contributions, do we really feel like, I, I would feel more comfortable saying, "Here's our budget, it's 2.5, we did the best we could, let the Board of Finance come to us with the proposal of the non-lapsing account instead of us offering it up." So that's sort of my feeling. I just feel like we could potentially need it in other ways.
Just listen for, for two plus hours of other ways we could really use this.
Right.
And I'd, I'd love to go with a 2.5, knowing that...
We might make changes.
If we've got something that we want to do, we can't fit it into the budget now because...
Right.
It's too late.
It's not, it's in the process, but I, I'm, I'm pretty confident that we're gonna want to do something before next spring or next...
Next budget cycle.
Next budget cycle.
I would agree with that because I have to think it makes good logistical sense to have some sort of unallocated reserve or contingencies. Every budget I've ever done always has reserves for, for contingencies.
Yeah.
And, but to go to the Board of Finance and say, "This is it, it's two and a half, that's the best we could do," I think we would also have to say, "The reason we're taking this position," if they ask, "is because these are three, three possible important needs for those funds over the next 12, 18 months and we just want to keep them in, just keep them available?" But we would have to give some reasons why we're doing it.
Right, but I, I still think we let the Board of Finance bring up the non-lapsing account to us rather than us offering it up to them.
But when they, but when they do come back, because they're gonna come back, so then what happens?
So that's, I'm fine with this, it's just a matter of how the conversation shapes, guys. They're gonna ask about the account, so that's fine, we can, we can do it either way. It's not, I don't think it's that big of a difference in what we're saying. That's all. It's fine.
Can I ask? Tom, you guys. We gotta raise hands here, people, we need one at a time.
I was gonna ask one other question.
Come sit, come sit in your chair.
Neil. Sue's the one in there, Tom.
We were, you were going out with another firm about enrollment numbers, not NASDAQ.
Yeah.
Have we heard back from them?
We have not, but we expect within the month of March to hear back.
I'm just, do you, so we don't have a preliminary, I'm wondering if, if our NASDAQ numbers maybe are lining up with that so that when we're talking about enrollment growth coming in five years or flat, just if we have somebody else kind of saying the same thing.
What you're gonna see is on their previous work that, well, they actually give you three projections, they kind of give you if you had a low-end projection, a high-end projection and a median projection. So they actually show you the range of what you might experience over the next several years.
Okay.
And, and, or to kind of use the median one would show you almost like what a worst-case and best-case scenario might be and that's, I'm actually intrigued, the firm we've used as more on a growth to kind of see what those ends might be whereas you don't, that's not a service that NASDAQ has to run.
Okay. Tom?
Yeah, just two, two additional comments on the non-lapsing. One would be, and I, I really don't like this arbitrary 2% thing. What we see up there is this is what we think the budget should be, the two and a half percent, it works out to be two and a half. And I don't think that we should, we should give on that, we should say, "This is what we think is right." Now, as far as the non-lapsing fund, the second comment is, we would, as Jennifer I think suggested, when they come back at us, then we say, "Well, here's why we don't want to let it go because we think we might need it for this." And one, and I don't know what the, I think the district needs to come together and say, "Why would we want to retain that?" Now, one thing I can think of, and I might be dead wrong, is we've got this facility study underway that we, what, $200,000 facility study? It is a certainty that what they come up with is gonna increase our cost structure, not just our capital structure, but our cost structure. And I would throw that out to the Board of Finance and say, "Look, we already know that we're gonna, we're gonna need some reserves to implement these, this facility situation." That's all I have to say.
So that's the conversation we, I just want to be clear, we're asking the board to vote on a 2.5% budget, so I think we're talking about a 2.5% budget is what we agree with as an administration and what we're putting forth is what we need.
How does everyone feel about that?
Yeah.
Jen, do you have something to say?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'm just not missing the, I'm missing, because it's 2.5, whether, whether or not, they bring up the conversation or you bring up the conversation, it's almost whatever, we know the conversation's gonna happen. And so then do we get an opportunity again afterwards to say, "Okay, we, we will find the money somewhere else" or we will propose this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Good, let's go on.
Anyone else have anything they'd like to ask, say? Question, Brian, do you have anything?
I'm good right now.
Sue's the one who made your act.
I think there's one more slide.
Oh, there's one more slide?
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Then we have the non-public, but they're separate, aren't they?
Alright, so the non-public budget, we talked about this briefly in the last, last workshop, is really made up of three different main areas. It's the nursing staff at our private schools in town, alright? It's the park and recreations account where we have a shared responsibility with them, but they have ma, responsibilities for maintaining our fields and it's some transportation dollars for our private schools. So it's $165,000 for the nursing, $200,000 for park and rec and $160,000 for the transportation. So as you can see, a very small increase over last year's expenditures of only a little less than $3,000. So they are two separate motions that you would need to vote on tonight. And then the last slide, I would just put up there as a little bit about process, Jen, which is what you were talking about. We would adopt the budget tonight, March 12th, we would go before the Board of Finance, we would have a presentation and a conversation about the budget. We would take any feedback that they have and return it to our board for conversation later in March and then the process moves forward to, in April, the Board of Finance in the public hearing on the budget.
Questions, comments, thoughts? Moving on, I would accept a motion to accept, to, no, I don't have to, what do I do next? We have another report, you want to all of them together? Okay. Oh, I have another report here, I'm sorry. Oh, our committee resignments. Wait a minute, so I, we're not voting on those now? We're supposed to... Oh, recommended actions, thank you. I've had a long night, I'm sorry. Okay. Pay attention. Um, moving on to our review, Board of Ed committees, you all have seen them, they've all been sent to you. Anyone have any comments, questions or thoughts on these? I tried to talk to all of you and hopefully we seem to be, everyone seems to be okay with them in our conversations.
Good.
Alright, moving on, recommended actions.
Move the Board of Education adopt a 2019-20 public school budget in the amount of $70,877,377, which represents an increase of $1,727,825 or plus 2.5%.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Going back to recommended action one, A, anybody like to make a motion on our non-school budget?
Move that the Board of Education adopt the 2019-20 non-public school budget in the amount of $546,402, which represents an increase of $2,942 or .54%.
Second? Jeff, do you have it? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Excellent, thank you very much. Oh, wait, we're, you can say anything you want, you're on, you, you...
Thank you.
I just want to thank the efforts of everybody that's here tonight in terms of putting together the budgets, advocating for the programs and the services that you need and doing it in such a professional way, so thank you very much.
And being responsible to the limitations of our budget because I'm sure you all have much higher needs than we were able to fulfill in this budget, so we appreciate all of your very thoughtful consideration and hard work.
They should, they should go home.
You are all welcome to go home, we only have two seconds left. I'm opening it up to public audience again, seeing none. We will move on to future business, our next board meeting is March 26th at the Board of Ed's conference room. I would accept any motions that anyone wanted to make at this point in time? Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very, very much. Thank you all very, very much.
Funding for Simsbury Community Television is provided in part by contributions from viewers like you. Thank you.